Canyon Lake, I want to thank you all for joining us this evening. Prior to moving on to our scheduled agenda, on behalf of the City Council, I want to address the incredibly sad news that we learned yesterday morning. As many of you know, Councilman Jordan Aaron-Cranz passed away in his sleep. Jordan served on the Canyon Lake City Council for over 12 years, including four terms as mayor. He is the only council member in the history of the Canyon Lake City Council to serve four terms. Prior to that, he had served on the Board of the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association for five years, and was Board President three times. While on the council, Jordan represented the city on numerous regional boards. Jordan was a property owner in Canyon Lake for over 50 years, and a full-time resident for more than 25 years. He was well-known and loved, an incredibly active member of the community. Jordan always had such a positive outlook on life, ensured that beautiful energy with everyone he encountered. I remember him saying to me, "Help me every day." We will be adjourning tonight's meeting in honor of Jordan. But for now, we would like you to go stand and join us in a moment of silence.
And I would now like to ask our Mayor Protem if he will lead us in invocation.
Absolutely. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today on a day of mourning. We come to you on a day where we recognize the life of such an amazing man that we have so many stories to tell. And I just ask for the courage, Lord, to give each and every one of us to remember the amazing time that we had with such an amazing human being. Let us be reminded of the importance of everything that we've learned from Jordan, which is happiness, joy, smiling, and making the light of any situation. Let us be reminded of the importance of public service like he did. Let us be reminded of giving before taking. These are some of the things that remind us of Jordan and all that he's done. If he was here this evening, he would say, "The show must go on. We must get back to work." But it is so crucial that we be reminded of everything that he's given. So I ask you, Lord, that tonight we remember the amazing man of Jordan, that we continue to move forward, and we be reminded of his love for Canyon Lake. And dear heavenly Father, amen.
Darcy, will you lead the flag salute, please?
My pleasure. Put your hand over your heart. You can join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you know that your mask doubles as a tissue? Okay. Let's try this again. Madam City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Green. Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Welty.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
All present.
Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no items to report out of closed session today.
Thank you so much. Are there any changes to the agenda today?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Welty.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, something happy. Um, Citizen of the Month. Debbie, could you come up, please? Thank you. This person, this wonderful Canyon Laker, is someone I think that everyone in the city of Canyon Lake is well acquainted with. And that is because she continuously puts herself out there. Not only is she an important part of our business community, important part of our chamber, but she is someone who is continuously volunteering her time. Um, I first met you when I was lucky enough to be appointed to the Veterans Committee. And I was just really blown away with your commitment to our military and our veterans. And during the pandemic, I think it was always nice that if we did get to go out, we were able to come and see you, a background post. And with a mask or not, I could tell that you were smiling. And that means a lot to all of us, good times or bad. Something that I don't know if anyone else knows is, one of the agenda items we have is allocation of monies that were part of the Veterans Day Committee that we didn't get to spend because our festivities were altered last year during the pandemic. We're reallocating those monies because you called me and said, "We need to do something on Memorial Day so that everyone remembers what this weekend is actually about." The Park Hopper event that the POA is putting on is great, but why do we have this important time? And on the council agenda, there'll be a presentation about all the amazing things that you brought to light. And just kind of, we ran with it. But it wasn't until I got that phone call that said, "Hey, we need to pause and remember what we're doing and why we do it." And for that reason, our May Citizen of the Month is Ms. Debbie Gagnon. And in your recognition of your contributions and dedicated to the Canyon Lake Veterans Day Committee and the city of Canyon Lake and everyone who lives here. Thank you so much. Do you want to take a picture? Do you want to take a... Last time, we didn't get a picture with faces.
Oh.
So, and I know.
You can do that.
Okay.
I'm fascinated.
Okay, good. Then I will come up.
One, two, three. One, two.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Well, I guess I'll do the other part here. So the next item on the agenda is a proclamation in recognition of National Police Week. Hi, can you come up? We started doing this last year, and I think it was long overdue. I'm not going to read all of it because it is very long. But I do want to say that whereas the city of Canyon Lake contracts with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department to provide public safety for the residents of this community, and whereas the members of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents of the city of Canyon Lake and the entire county of Riverside, whereas the men and women of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifice of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, whereas by their service and their dedicated efforts, these men and women have earned the gratitude of the city of Canyon Lake, whereas the City Council of the city of Canyon Lake and its residents wish to thank those brave individuals who are sworn to protect and defend them, and those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the service to their community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, recognizes the week of May 9th through the 16th, 2021, as National Police Week, and call upon the citizens of the city of Canyon Lake to observe the 15th day of May, 2021, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Be it further proclaimed that the City Council wishes to extend our most sincere appreciation to Sheriff Chad Bianco, Captain Andrew... I'm sorry, Andy Alea, Lieutenant James Rails, and the rest of the law enforcement staff from the county of Riverside, Lake Elsinore Station. We are so proud of you. We are so grateful for you. This council is not one of those councils that is anti-law enforcement, and we will never be. And so, thank you so much for your service.
We are very proud to serve the community of Canyon Lake. There's no other community throughout the county that is more supportive, I can tell you that. And we enjoy it. So, we're proud to be here.
We never want you to leave. Thank you so much.
And I'll make sure that...
Open a picture.
I'll make sure that this is up at the station. And then, meeting and briefing.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Then yeah, come on, get them up. One, two, three.
Thank you so much. That was hard, too. I lost my mask. Okay, community reports. I'm asking that these stay...
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
On that, on your ceremonial matters, I did ask the clerk if I could mention a longtime resident who is leaving our community. And she's served the city as a volunteer for many, many years. And her name is Nancy Carroll. And Nancy, for most of us, has been part of the Emergency Preparedness Committee for many years, as well as doing CPR and at various clubs that she's been involved with. Both her and her husband, who has since passed, were active members and gave countless hours in time for their unselfish dedication to both the city and to our community. So I wish her the best. She is going to be missed. She's moving to the state of Tennessee. And so with that, good luck on your next life. And thank you. Sorry, I thought it was on your script.
No, but thank you for absolutely recognizing that important part of our community. Okay, three minutes each, community reports. We're back in person. I got my gavel. I'm going to use it. Okay. Vice President Darcy Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Castillo. It's nice to see all the City Council, City Manager. We actually have a presentation tonight, Mayor Castillo, so it's going to take a little bit longer than three minutes.
I will indulge you.
Thank you. Regarding our upcoming rate study. On a personal note, though, President Williams and I both would like to...
Oh, is this a business thing? I'm sorry, can we enter up for a second, Vice President Burke? So we actually have agendized the presentation for Bonnie. So if you want to go ahead with your comments.
Perfect.
And then we have her as a separate item on the agenda.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted, on behalf of President Phil Williams and the rest of the board, extend our condolences regarding Jordan's passing. And on a personal note, I have never had a more entertaining and wonderful vector control report in my life regularly. And I'm really going to miss that. So whomever takes that seat will never take his place. And they have very, very large shoes to fill. So thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. And very true. Okay. President Poland, are you on the line?
Sam, can you read them?
Yes, sir. Can you... It is your turn. Three minutes, please.
Okay. Three minutes. Thank you, Mayor Castillo. I appreciate the opportunity to brief the council on the activities of the POA. And I have certainly enjoyed our monthly breakfast meetings. I say all that because last night was the last meeting of our current board. It was a hybrid meeting, very, very successful, and we plan to continue that. We remembered our good friend, pioneer, and POA leader, Jordan Aaron-Cranz, conducted our business and said goodbye to two directors, Tom Nathan and Jeanne O'Dell. Thank them for their terrific service. As you've known, we are in the middle of our election. We have three open seats and six candidates. A very contentious election campaign going on. Fortunately, it'll be over next week. And issues have been about trust, flags, spending, and dues. And we'll see how that turns out on Thursday, if we get quorum, or Saturday, if that's not the case. By the end of the week, the new board will have two or three new members. And as always, we expect there to be change. Last night, the Canyon Lake POE Year in Review was presented to our community. It was an incredible discussion about the activities and goals of our board, corporate, and all departments. I would encourage you to have a look at our website and look at that presentation to get a full, breadth understanding about our POA and what goes on. And we sanctioned a new Canyon Lake Veterans and First Responders Group last night. We look forward to their service. We passed a rule change related to election signs and flags. Flags are signs now, and there are limits when they can be posted as they relate to elections. And of course, we don't permit any vulgar words. We approved a new large dog park at Eastport, which will be under construction this year. And we approved the construction of restrooms at Roadrunner Park, which is notable only because it took 15 years. Fortunately, not because of your city department. No, it was because we had a terrible time trying to make decisions about how to spend our money. Finally, we started a 10-year program to repair our roads after extensive renovation. It'll be about a $20 million program. We commissioned the design of the first phase for this next year. It'll be a $5 or $6 million project that will be very, very visible in our community. It's been a pleasure to brief you each month as the POA president, and I certainly hope to be back before you in June. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, is Jeanne O'Dell on the line?
We do not. I'm sorry, she couldn't join us tonight, so she'll resume her reports in person next month.
Okay, thank you so much. Public Safety update, RSO.
Good evening. Before I start my monthly report and give my monthly report, just on behalf of Sheriff Chad Bianco and Sheriff's Administration, they wanted me to send my sincere condolences on the passing of Councilman Aaron-Cranz. Many of them knew him personally, so they were upset when they heard about it. But they just want to send a condolences to the council, to the city staff, and to members of the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on that, I have the report for the month of May, which covers April. Deputies responded to 391 calls for service. That is up 70 calls from March, which was 321. There was only eight Part I crimes. Very small report. We had no homicides, no rapes, no robberies, no thefts, no motor vehicle thefts, and no arsons. We did have one burglary. The only thing that was up was aggravated assaults. And when I say aggravated assaults, that ranges from a simple battery, where there's any kind of physical altercation, all the way to a stabbing or a shooting, which we did not have. But that, it's a big range with there. And a lot of those were domestic violence or just simple batteries. And during the month of April, deputies made one public intoxication arrest. They wrote four traffic citations, made two DUI arrests, investigated three traffic collisions, and overall, made 17 arrests. And many of those, 11 of them, were outstanding warrants. Deputies are starting to serve warrants throughout the Canyon Lake community when they're not responding to calls, so you're going to see that number go up. And they are also doing a lot of pedestrian checks, vehicle stops, and running people for warrants. So you'll probably see those arrests go up, just with the deputies just being out there more. And that is all I have for the report. I did wanted to show a new reporting system that's coming. Right now, Lake Elsinore Station is a pilot station for this. It's going to go countywide by the new fiscal year, so probably early June, to where it's kind of a wee tip, but it's geared more towards Riverside County and the Sheriff's Department, where people can... They could just scan the QRL code, or they can text, or they can call, and they can make these anonymous reports. And I'm already... This has been out for a couple weeks now, and I'm already starting to get a lot of reports in. A lot of them are anonymous reports and tips. Some of them are actually the reports that need to be taken, that we send out to deputies. So what happens on these is they come straight to the captain and all the lieutenants. So if it's Canyon Lake, Lake Elsinore-related, it comes to me. And I go through and disperse them to send to either special teams or investigations, patrol, wherever they need to go. A lot of them are just complaints and concerns on things that I just respond back to you on. So this, you'll see this come out very soon. I actually had a bunch of signs that I was going to pass out to you, but I realized that the numbers were wrong on them, so now they had to go back to fix the numbers. So we'll get something out to where you can put this on social media. And a lot of the reports can start coming in that way, or just any complaints, concerns, questions, that type of thing. So that will be coming out shortly.
That's very exciting for our community.
Yes.
Any questions from the council? Thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, do we have fire? Chief?
We do not have CAL FIRE here. I'm being told there's a brush fire on the Ortega. It's possible that they're out there. However, they did provide stats. There's some on the back counter, and then council has also provided copies.
Okay, and then if council has any questions, they can email the City Manager, who will forward those along. Okay. Code enforcement. Hi, Ruby.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. So I will be providing the report for the month of April. And I kind of just want to dive in straight onto BLM. We issued a total of 11 citations. And of course, the activity has not decreased. But I wanted to give you an update, and I attached a map on there, if you want to look at it. And this is regarding Greenwald, because I know we were discussing this last month, regarding the dirt bikes off of Greenwald. And so, we have been seeing activity there with dirt bikes and parents taking their children there. However, they're in the Lake Elsinore area. And the blue area that you see there, that's private property. And I checked in with Lake Elsinore Code Enforcement. They don't regularly really patrol that area. In fact, they allow off-roading there with the permit. But of course, it's not our area or jurisdiction, so we don't get into that. And then, the dark green area, that's RCA property. And if you see the three Xs there, the first X, red X there, that's the main gate to their property. We... BLM actually has a metal sign posted on there prohibiting vehicles. And then about a quarter of a mile down, the second X there, there's another BLM sign. And then maybe about a mile down, it's where our BLM jurisdiction begins, and we have a BLM sign posted there. And I know, Mayor Protem Smith, you had asked if we can get with BLM and see if they would be willing to share the cost with the city with one of the bigger signs, the kiosks that we have over at Quail Valley area. Unfortunately, they cannot help with that at this time. But he did provide the website where we can obtain it, should we want to go ahead and move forward with that. And they are willing to help with the installation if we desired that, so that we can save costs there. And that's what I have for BLM. And then I wanted to briefly, we... Last month, we were down to 13 short-term rentals. We're now down to seven.
Good job.
And so people have been coming in and complying with those. And then just a quick update on our in-person inspections. Those are still on hold due to continuous COVID restrictions. But we're hoping we can resume those maybe around June or July.
And that's for the residential rental program?
Residential and fire.
Oh, okay. That's it? Any questions from the council?
Yes, Ruby, I did reach out to RCA Director to have one of their departments to get ahold of you on signage. I'm not sure if we can do anything, but I did mention that the property is being utilized to get into, and it's not in the scheme of RCA. So hopefully, next week, they'll get ahold of you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You know, Councilman Green, you and I had the discussion last month about the issues with dirt biking and offloading.
Yeah.
This map really clears it up because it's all taking place on the private property. The offloading is all done on the private side of it, and there's no enforcement there.
Correct.
Not that, you know, we should be, you know, big police bearin' here, but it's important to know the education. It's important to know that the reason why we're not enforcing is because it's private property. And I think that's what really needs to be pushed out to community members when I receive phone calls or text messages on, "Why aren't we doing anything?" And it's not because we're not doing anything. It's because we can't. It's unenforceable because it's private property. So I just want to say thank you for doing this. This makes it very simple for our folks to see what is and what is not. And it's clear as day. The only criticism that I think, and I think Larry would agree with me on the signage for the BLM, is it's past the loading zone on where these guys are going. They're going to the private spot, and then they're driving in, offloading, and then going past the signs and getting in. So they never even see the signs unless you're a resident of Canyon Lake, which is why I still think the sign, you know, is a component. Now, have we... We talked to Lake Elsinore about this being private property. Is it owned by the city of, or is it owned by personal?
No, it's a personal.
Okay, and they've... They're allowing, obviously, this activity as long as a permit is pulled by the owner?
That I wouldn't know. So you can have people just offloading there, and we have no idea whether they have a permit from the property owner or not.
Okay. It's not that we have any right to enforce or not. It's just nice to know the information.
Right.
But seriously, I can't thank you enough for putting this map together. Awesome work.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you so much.
Also, I did bring up, because the chair is from Lake Elsinore, that I've seen offloading, not so much here, but which is obviously in this blue area, but farther on down Greenwald, there are places that they park off Greenwald and offload their trailers, and then take the roads that are up in here with the mobiles.
Yeah, there are many areas.
And access the backside of the BLM.
There are many areas. So they somehow will end up there at times, you know? So maybe a bigger kiosk sign will help, and more patrolling on our end.
The last thing, Madam Mayor, if I may. We had our roundtable discussion last month, and Director Burke was there. Councilman Welty was there, our City Manager. And we had some good discussion with the POA in regards to partnering up on some of the rental issues that we're dealing with at the city side of it. Very positive conversation. I think the general manager's on board with really helping us and coming up with a solution to give us more resources to help with some of the problems you're having with identifying properties and managing that. So I just wanted to throw that your way, that, you know, some good stuff, I think, is going to come up with our partners over at the POA. So...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, we're actually doing all right. Public comments. Madam Clerk, can you please read the public comment statement?
Thank you. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. Please note that if you are addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. Members of the public who are joining us virtually are asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@canyonlakeca.gov. I will continue to accept email comments during this meeting in real time. Electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. All comments received on a specific agenda item will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. So we've got one person, in-person comment, and then we've got one email comment. So we'll start with the in-person, Mr. Jack Wamsley.
Okay. Hi, Jack. All right, three minutes. I got my gavel. Just kidding. Sort of.
Don't start yet. Just one thing I'd like to comment. We've lost a great council member, and I've lost a great friend. And he's going to be hard to replace. With that all... But with that, go ahead with it. About three months ago, we started on a project. Jordan and Warren Kelsey, the director of Riverside County Flood Control, myself, sort of there, and this is what this is about. And one of the problems we're having within Canyon Lake and other cities is trying to decipher this. This is the manual that is ridiculous. Nobody, you hand this manual to any city, you're going to get six different answers as to what to do. I thought at the time that we could do better. So I talked with the head of the flood control, Jason, and I told Jason I would like to attack this program. And he said, I agree, we need to do something with it. What it is, is making it simple for our people that are building a house, making an addition, whatever it is, it's almost impossible to live up to everything that they're trying to say here and then understanding what they're saying. So we, I picked Jordan because he has building information. Warren Kelsey's probably built more than anybody else in this place. Shopping centers all over the country and everything else. And we had a meeting with the director of engineering. We felt originally I wanted to go all the way to Southern California and he said, well, you're biting off more than you can chew. And I said, you're probably right. He said, why don't we do one city? Canyon Lake, let's try it for a year, see how it goes. Well, I said, I'd like to brush this down to three to four pages. And that should be something that we could give a contractor. Everybody will understand it and they'll get the job done. He agreed, Jordan agreed, Warren agreed, and I feed the information to our city manager. He has known about this since we started. I don't, anything I do, I make sure he understands. Monday, I got a call. Flood Control has hired a corporation that's very good at doing this. They understand how to do this, they understand what we want. And as soon as we get that information from the corporation, I present that to the city manager and we'll kind of go from there and it'll be presented to you people. I hope that we can get it going. We can try it for a year here. If it works here, we're going to go with probably, well, we'll start with my district, which is Elsinore, Canyon Lake, Wildamar, so on. And so I hope that I'm not surprising you with something here. We don't have anything to present right now because it's going into this corporation and they're developing it. We should have it within a month. And I'll make sure that all of you have it and you can kind of look at it and see if we can give it to the average guy that's building something that knows what the hell we're doing.
Thank you, Jack. We appreciate you working on that and we look forward to your next report on it.
Well, I'll try to make sure that our city manager knows what I'm doing.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move on to our email comment. This is going to be from the Sierra Club, Kim Floyd, the Conservation Chair. And this is, Sierra Club is asking for you to support full implementation of SV-1383. Dear City of Canyon Lake City Council members and staff, as you probably know jurisdictions across the state are working hard to stop dumping organic material into landfills as called for by SV-1383. Short-lived climate pollutants, organic waste methane emissions reductions. Sierra Club supports you to make rapid progress to divert organics from landfills. Nearly 1 in 4 Californians suffer from food insecurity, yet more than 11 billion pounds of food is wasted every year in California. According to the LA Times, the typical American adult wastes about $3.50 worth of food every day. Organic waste, including food waste, decomposes in landfills, releasing methane emissions that account for 20% of the state's methane. Since methane is a short-lived climate super pollutant 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide, reducing methane has the fastest impact on the climate crisis. According to the Legislative Analyst Office, organic waste reduction is one of the cheapest forms of greenhouse gas reductions. And according to a well-known report, the business and societal case for reducing food waste by R-E-F-E-D, restaurants and food service providers could gain the largest profit boost. Food waste solutions are a strong engine for job creation. Consumer education campaigns have the smallest cost and biggest benefit. Palm Springs can act individually and/or partner with other cities to form regional organic waste reduction campaigns with three excellent results. Feed the hungry, conserve natural resources, slow down climate change. Attached is Sierra Club's recommended actions for organic waste reduction. We know SV-1383 implementation is not easy and would raise collection fees, but this is important and the results will be worth the effort. Please let me know how local Sierra Club members can help. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to respond that this is the same bill that the city council already received a report on and is expecting an ordinance to implement very soon.
Thank you. Do you need a break to take a breath to read the consent calendar statement?
I'm good, I think we can push forward.
Okay, thank you.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Is there anyone who would like to pull a consent calendar item?
Number five, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar without number five.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item five.
Okay, item five.
Yes, I want to talk about item five. You know, we do a lot of things and our city staff doesn't get enough credit sometimes, but economic development has been a key pattern for this council and item five is a prime example of that, bringing on a tenant in one of the buildings that we occupied. And I just want to say hats off to the staff on putting together economic development programs such as the one that we're going to implement tonight. You guys are rocking it, we're bringing money back to the city. We have local tenants that are coming in that are Canyon Lakers, we're excited about that. And we're just doing the right stuff on the, on the business side of it. So I just want to simply say thank you so much and I'm excited to vote for this.
I'm excited as well.
Good job. I just say a good job and my, my input in the center is we're getting a lot of interest in rental space. Much more, most rental space is already occupied or going to be occupied and there's people daily asking for score footage. So that's a good thing.
That's great.
Okay, so can we have a motion and a second to approve?
Be happy.
Item number five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item number five.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is public hearing for MSHCP. We are going to open the public hearing at 7:10. Need a staff presentation from our city planner, Mr. Morrissey.
Madam Mayor, one thing I forgot, very important.
Okay, but we just started a public hearing, so we're going to have to defer you to after the public hearing because the public hearing is now open.
I need somebody to replace Jordan.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in front of you are a lot of items intended to increase the multi-species habitat conservation fee. The purpose of it essentially is to adopt an ordinance that sets up the parameters to be able to adopt the fee increase. The ordinance adopted by the council in 2004, some jurisdictions did it in 2003, was based upon a particular study done at that time. Some parameters have changed. They weren't able to get as much funding from governmental agencies, the pace of development has slowed, they weren't able to acquire as much land as they thought, so they're trying to do some different things such as spread out the timeframe. And they looked at an analysis of what that would do and how the fees would be adjusted. So they've sent out to all the different jurisdictions that are members of the Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan, there's 18, including the county, we are one of the 18. And the ordinance and resolution you see is the same as for all the jurisdictions. We literally did a plug-in to those. So it helps to reference the new fee study and then the resolution, as I mentioned, identifies the fee. As you've noticed in there, the fees increased substantially. But based upon the analysis that it took, the fee would have increased three times that rate. So what they tried to do is minimize that increase, make it more reflective of the different activities that are ongoing, in other words, reality to the current situation. So the item before you this evening is to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance 207, amending and updating the City of Canyon Lake MSHCP ordinance. And secondly, adopt the attached resolution 2020, excuse me, I've got glasses, but I can't use them all the time. 2021-24, adopting a MSHCP local development mitigation fee schedule. If there's any questions, I'll try and respond to them.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. When is this fee paid? Is this paid at the time they build the house or at the time they file the map?
The fee is paid upon a building permit either at issuance or at occupancy.
So our current homeowners?
The building.
Our current homeowners that have lots in Canyon Lake would have, they don't have to, because it was, the fees do it at a different time?
Yeah, I'm shaking my head in advance of you actually asking the question. So if you're a, for you're a landowner, nothing's there, you want to pull a building permit, yes, you would pay that fee. If you're an existing landowner in a residence, no. It's only new development.
So the current vacant lots in Canyon Lake, if they choose to build a home, wouldn't have to pay this because?
Would have to pay.
Would have to pay this.
Also, may I comment that of all the cities and participating agencies that are part of RCA and part of the MS, or MCH, whatever the plan is?
MSHCP.
MSHCP plan, 94% of the cities have already adopted the fee increase. And to give a little bit more background, that was due to a two-year NEXUS study that was done to complete the habitat, which is, in our county, will be a total of 300,000 acres. And that's acreage that is connecting dots for wildlife travel and we have some actually here in Canyon Lake. So the plan will be completed in years to come, but not that many years out. So this is just a necessary step in order for us to move forward into completing the plan and then to maintain the plan.
Exactly. Thank you.
Did you have another question, follow-up question to that, Dale?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Jeremy, anything? All right. Any testimony by proponents? Hearing none, any testimony by opponents? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed at 7:15. What do you think?
Good.
Good?
Good.
Good? Good? Okay, so the recommendation is the introduction and first reading. Can I get a motion and a second to approve that introduction and first reading of ordinance 207?
Motion.
Second.
Interroll call vote, please.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 207, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Canyon Lake, California, to update the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan.
Wonderful. Okay, business item number seven.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
If I, we think we have the same thing.
Yes, there's actually a resolution that goes with one as well. If we can get a motion and second for resolution number 2021-24?
You're absolutely right and I'm sorry, I skipped that.
There it is. Okay, I see it now. I'll make that, I'll make that motion, resolution number 2021-24.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to adopt resolution number 2021-24.
Thank you so much. Okay. Do I need to wait for Taylor?
Yeah, so the people you see on the screen are members from RCA who are joining us just in case the council had any questions and so we thank them for joining us. And it looks like everything was approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Business item number seven is now Darcy. Darcy and Bonnie.
Madam Mayor, we're, uh...
Oh.
We're working on a technical issue here, one minute, please.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'll take this down so I can speak a little more clear. My condolences on your loss, you's a great man and I'm very sorry for you and your loss. I'm here this evening to talk about our public hearing regarding our budget and our rates. So before I get into all of that, I wanted to give you a little information about Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. Again, my name is Bonnie Woodrum, I'm the Community Affairs Supervisor and with me this evening is Director, Vice President Burke of your division. We serve 157,000 customers in the Elsinore Valley service area. We have 97 square miles that stretches all the way to the Temescal Canyon area, down to Murrieta, across the Ortegas, and here to Canyon Lake. And within those boundaries, we have hundreds and hundreds of miles of water and sewer pipelines, many, many facilities, pump stations, booster stations, and groundwater wells. And in order to maintain all of that, we do have to look at our rates on a regular basis to ensure we're providing that quality service 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So with that consideration, we will be hosting a public hearing. The notices will be mailed out early next week and we are considering a 5.1% increase on the upcoming bill. The hearing will take place on June 24th at 6:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting and the proposed rates would go into effect on January 1st, 2022. So I wanted to give you a little snapshot of what we're facing at the district and why those costs are increasing. So one of our largest increases is our imported water costs. We bring water from Northern California and the Colorado River to supplement our supplies here in the valley. We get about 65% of our water imported and those costs are increasing $4.2 million. We're also facing energy cost increases. We've been projected to see energy costs increase from 18 to 27%, which equals about $724,000. The cost of compliance, so for us to ensure that we're providing that top-notch water service and product, we do have to meet all the state and federal regulations and those come at a cost as well. And we're looking at $9 million in compliance costs. Employment obligations, as EVMWD takes care of our customers, we also take care of our employees and we want to make sure that they are prepared when they are treating the water, if they're in, working with a water system or a wastewater system, they need to be able to be compliant and make sure that they understand what regulations need to be met and that takes training. We also are faced with costs with health insurance and benefits and unfortunately, though we're competitive with those, we do see those costs. And unfortunately, though we're competitive with those, we do see those costs rising as well. What has the district done to offset some of those costs? Well, over the past 10 years, we've seen 23% growth within our community. But our staff has remained the same, actually less. We've lessened staff by two. The board and our general manager tasked staff with reducing costs, whatever costs that we could control. And so staff came back with a $1.2 million reduction over the next two years in costs. We also have a very robust grants program. And our grants team has brought $254 million of grants and low-interest loans to help offset some of the capital improvement projects that we are working on. Also, the board is considering moving to a four-year rate model to save on those related expenses. So what does that mean to our customers? Well, here in Canyon Lake, we're looking at a family of four with water and sewer service with a 4,700-square-foot lot and with an average 21-unit consumption. And we're looking at a $7.65 increase on their bill. Now, all of this information is available on our website, evmwd.com/budget. You're able to pull that information up this evening. There's a bill estimator there. And you'd be able to punch in your own numbers to get a better idea of what that looks like. And then, of course, next week, you'll be receiving the notice in the mail. So we understand that 2020 was a really difficult year. And though we have to continue to keep water systems moving, moving forward, we do understand that there's a financial burden that some of our customers may be facing. So EVMWD offers many programs. We have a rate assistance program. We also offer payment plans. We have a host of many ways for anyone of any income level to contact us. And we can help you find the right program. I would say our customer service team are experts at helping customers find the right program to help meet their needs. So I'd welcome you to give us a call, and we can help with that. So lastly, I just want to again invite you to that public hearing. That will be on Thursday, June 24th at 6:00 PM. It is a virtual meeting. The link is available on the website. And of course, if you have questions beforehand, we have information on that website, as well as give us a call on our main number, and we're happy to help. And lastly, I just wanted to let all of you know that Director Burke is always available for you. And she's always happy to take your questions. And she can be emailed at dburk@evmwd.net. And of course, you're always welcome to call us at our main number, and we're happy to help. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
I have a statement. Just Director Burke has been mentioning for over a year now that rates were going up. So I don't think that this is, or shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. Director Burke, as you've said, is very available. She had a coffee in Canyon Lake this morning. And there were people who came specifically to talk to her about this. So hopefully, the constituents of Canyon Lake are not shell-shocked by this because it has literally been reported at every council meeting and POA meeting for the whole year.
Yeah. I gotta- I want to say, first of all, awesome job on the presentation. Very simple. You know, we see where the costs are coming from. I think that's what, you know, most residents look for is why are we paying what we're paying? And that made it very clear with that one slide showing the different allocations that are needed. One word comes to mind, that's transparency. So shout out to you, Vice President, honestly. Phenomenal job on getting ahead of this thing. People forget, too, that during COVID, EVMWD did not raise rates. And that was something that they took very in heart, and they knew they had to do it anyways. But they said, no, we're not going to do it. We understand we're in a pandemic. So shout out to the organization on making that known. But also, just a shout out to you, Darcy, because you're getting ahead of this thing. You're not hiding behind it. I don't think we've had too many directors who've been as strong-willed as you are on getting the head of bad information, as opposed to waiting for something to hit the mailbox and dealing with the repercussions of that. So I want to applaud you on your efforts. I think it's been very refreshing for me to see so much transparency taking place out of our water provider. So thank you so much for this information. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't think anyone wants to have rates raised, but the knowledge of it is good.
And just to repeat what Vice President Burke always tells us is that Canyon Lake tends to be one of the biggest water users per residents. And that really, the 5.1% is money out of your pocket. But it doesn't have to be. If you go out and check your sprinklers, you go out and you make sure that the hose isn't running down the driveway. The more water you use, obviously, the higher tier you go into. So if you can just do some basics, maybe take out a little bit of grass and put in some dry landscaping or drought-tolerant landscaping. And as what I hear is that the state itself is, again, starting to look at a more of a drought period than we have in the last couple of years. And again, to get in front of this, we as the community members can start looking at our own usage and take some control of that.
I think something else that Director Burke always says is look at your auto pay and see what you are paying, instead of just letting it come out of your account.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking credit card, by the way. Appreciate the points.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this?
I don't have any public- I don't have any cards. I have no cards on this side of the table.
Do you have a card, Jack, for this item?
I got your card.
Okay.
Two things. First of all, I need a replacement for our council member. I'd like to request either Larry or Dale.
So this is on the water issue, though, right now?
Well, this is water clarity. That's what I'm working on. But anyway, I would like to know about the supply. At present time, Lake Mead is down over 200 feet. In Southern California, we are really out of water. The San Onofre is changing, and it hasn't already changed, changed to desalting. And there was a process of running a pipe across the mountain over here. My question is, where are we with that? And I know that that's a really important desalting move. San Diego was- Has a huge desalting plant down there, one of the biggest in the country. And I think it's our answer for water in the future. So I just didn't know where that pipeline was.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
We're really excited to be able to have the public back and the audience after a long year. But I think a little of this might be a little out of practice. Just a reminder to the public that this is a city council meeting. It's a business meeting of the city council. We welcome public comment and input at the appropriate time. We have a general public comment section at the beginning of the meeting. You have three minutes during that time to talk about anything you want. On any item on the agenda, we do ask that you submit a public comment card for that item. You'll have three minutes to talk. It's not a back-and-forth. It's not questions back and forth to the council or to the audience. It is three minutes to make a comment, if you wish. And we just- We have to follow the protocols. So I just wanted to offer that as a reminder now that we're getting back into the swing of things in person. Thank you.
I think we all are rusty doing our best. Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. So we are moving on to item number eight. This is a presentation of the Evaluation Methods and Conceptual Design Plan for the Town Center, the specific plan. Mr. City Manager, I believe you have the presentation.
Well, thank you. Actually, I'd like to ask our city planner, Jim Morrissey, to make the presentation on this item. And I think we have a couple of our consultants in the room as well who have worked hard on this. And we're excited to present this tonight.
Thank you. Hi.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening again. Yes, I think you're going to enjoy the presentation by our consultant team. What I'd like to do in advance of that is provide a little background of how we got where we are. If you recall, as part of discussions we've had before, this is a combination of a few things. It's a combination of a desire by the state to make sure there's adequate housing throughout the state. And they've allocated particular numbers to each jurisdiction. And to further that goal, they provided some funding that was made available to jurisdictions to apply for and obtain, in which they could develop plans to undertake planning methods and procedures to further that housing effort. And we've done that. We've applied for what's known as the SB2 funds. It's $160,000 from the state. The city's portion that they've decided, you've decided to chip in is 140. So we have $300,000 to utilize. And our focus was to develop a specific plan for the town center where we are to incorporate housing and also to enhance the commercial opportunities in our center. And to further that along, we went out to receive proposals, not dollar proposals, but requests for qualifications. One of the interesting aspects that occurred is one of the firms, Albert A. Webb Associates, as part of their statement of qualifications, happened to list a budget. And that budget provided additional room within that $300,000 cap to start thinking about incorporating additional assistance to create a plan that we really think will help define and create an opportunity for a developer to come in and really utilize that plan to build. The important criteria within SB2 is that whatever planning action you take, there won't be subsequent discretionary action. Meaning, okay, we've done that planning effort. Now you have to go through the subdivision process, the environmental review process, change the general plan, change the zoning, do all these other things. No, it's an attempt by the state to say, okay, let's move you to a point where a developer can come in and submit plans and actually build, get those units on the ground. One of the other firms that provided a statement of qualifications was WHA. And I had a discussion with those two firms. And they had worked together in the past. And I thought, this is great. So we have the engineering, the planning, the environmental with Albert A. Webb Associates. And we have similar criteria with WHA, but they're also an architectural firm. So they understand the specific design parameters that are necessary. A lot of times, specific plans, and I'll get into really what a specific plan is, but specific plans can be very general. We want certain type of land use at a certain density in this area. And that's what it is. So they calculate acreage, unit density, and they say there'll be X number of units in this particular area, X number of commercial square footage in another. Well, we have a very defined space. It's developed. And we have particular goals that we want to achieve, as provided by the state. So the insertion of a team that incorporated architectural design understanding and details is very important to make sure it's really a workable plan. It is possible that when we're done, a developer may see it and may want some adjustments to it. But the level of the specificity in the plan will allow us to say, is it compatible or not? Does it have the features that we decided were important? We want this. Did they achieve that? We'd like to have this type of design criteria. Did they do that? Could there be little adjustments? Yes. But did they hold the plan as originally envisioned? And I think that with the team that we have, that that can be achieved. Also, the use of the term "specific plan", I think conjures up a lot of different things in one's mind. This was the one state law that works. It's six sentences long. It creates the framework for developing a plan that can be as broad or as narrowly focused, as detailed or as generalized as you want. So it'll talk about the land uses, the infrastructure, the design parameters, and the methods of achieving them. And that's really all you have. I've seen specific plans, when stacked on top, I kid you not, stand to here, Riverside County. I've also done a specific plan that was three pages long because all that was desired was the addition of a road. So you have vast flexibility there. And what we'd like to talk about this evening with you is an understanding of what our goals are, the how that would work in this town center, and get your feedback. We couldn't do it earlier because we had too many balls in the air. We were able to take those different concerns, kind of put them together. The consultant team has met with us and City Manager. We've had discussions back and forth in Zoom meetings. So we've got a plan that kind of shows a potential for something. And we're interested in your feedback. So this is a very important step. It is not too late. It's not too early. It's where it should be. So we hope that it meets with your satisfaction. And any input you can provide us, good, bad, is more than welcome. So as part of our team from WHA, we have Julia Melissos and Eric Scott. They're going to run through a PowerPoint presentation. And if you have any questions of us at the end, we're more than happy to respond to that. Again, we want to create-
Do you have a copy of the presentation?
Pardon?
Do you have a copy of the presentation?
Yes, we do.
Can I?
Oh, actual paper copy? No. We can make one available, though. Yes, of course.
All right. Good evening. My name is Julia Melissos. I'm a principal of, in the Community Planning and Design Department of WHA. I've been a planner for many years. And I've been at WHA for many years. Along with me is Senior Associate and Architect Eric Scott. So we are tag-teaming this tonight. And on behalf of WHA, we really want to, you know, give our condolences to you guys. I was a planning commissioner for many years. And while I was a commissioner, I lost one of my fellow commissioners. And you truly are a team. You know, though you may have different opinions when you're on the dais, but you truly are a team. And you feel that loss when one of your team members passes away. So my heart is out to you guys. And so, on a lighter note, as it seems from your explanation, I think he would want- He wants some happiness and love at E and we're here to bring that. And we hope to bring some excitement to some future development that happens in Canyon Lake. As Jim mentioned, we, you know, this is- We've started this process. So in order for us that we feel that we can, you know, truly create something, we've really come up with some cornerstones to a vision. So we can stay focused. We can start guiding the process. And we can start getting input from what everyone would like to see. So the cornerstone to our project, and as Jim mentioned, this is the town center. Wonderful opportunity to look at what may happen in the future there. We want- We have some cornerstones that, again, focus us on moving forward. So maximizing the site location and surrounding features. It's beautiful. There's no doubt that the views are not beautiful. The golf course is beautiful. It's a great location. We wanted to utilize existing entry points. When we start looking at this, we really want to try and make it as least impactful as possible. So the entry points are great. There's no reason to change it. If we can use what existing infrastructure is there, we absolutely will. To create a place, a spot that people want to gather. We know the lake is, of course, a big feature here and a big amenity. But we- The town center can be, too. There's a lot of economic opportunity there. And there's a- And again, a place to put some new housing that will be helpful. So we want to make it a spot, a place. When we say "place-making," we truly mean we want to create something great that the city- Sorry. That the city is proud of. Housing opportunities, which we go- Will go into more. And it's been discussed. This has all been implemented because of the housing opportunities. So looking at creative ways to implement housing, bring some new housing to the area, some needed housing to the area, while capitalizing on having an ability to have housing there, have retail there, have a great spot to gather. Of course, implementation for future development, which is why we're doing the specific plan. Encourage golf cart and pedestrian activity. We know the cars are here, of course, and that's fine. But we also want to encourage some multimodal other ways. We love the golf cart parking. I would definitely use that if I was going over for a drink. At the fun restaurants you guys have over there, it's a great opportunity. Social spaces for interaction. We're coming out of, of the pandemic. I think everyone's willing and ready and wanting to get out and, and get back in the community and, and be outside and with everyone. And of course, the vision is to produce this town center specific plan that will, in the future, guide the development. So to reiterate a little bit of what Jim said, but it's important to note is, you know, how it came about, which was through the state, through a state mandate to look at housing, to think about the future, to, to create a specific plan. And, and really what we try and do is create really pragmatic but visionary specific plans that don't sit on a shelf. We want it to be a usable document from now, for the staff planners, for the, you know, in, in twenty years, they can still use this document. So we look at ways to be flexible but guiding, truly a vision for the future. I just to list out a couple of sections for anyone who hasn't seen the specifics plan. There are things that we typically tend to put in a vision. We want to set it up. We want to create the expectation. We want to create the vision for what this area should be or wants to be. Land use is, is a legal part that you have to put in. But of course, it's important, you need to describe what type of uses are going to be in there. Circulation and parking, of course. Infrastructure as in sewage, civil, you know, all of that type of thing to some extent can put in as much as you can when it's so early in the process. Development standards, one of the great parts of specific plans is it's kind of a method to create new rules. It's a way to allow innovative development. So a lot of zoning ordinances throughout the country are a little bit antiquated. And these are ways to create new ideas and implement new ideas and new housing and new development when ordinances may be out of date. And then of course, how does it happen? How does it move forward? What type of funding? Those are all items that are, are included in specific plans. And of course, the result is to have a, an expedited development process when something actually comes to be. So it's a way to, you say, if a developer comes in, as Jim mentioned, and they're happy with the specific plan, they're happy with what was developed, that they can go in, they're compliant with it, and they can move forward fairly quickly. If they don't, there's all these ways to amend a specific plan and, and create something different. But the goal is to really make it easier for a developer to come in and do it. On the right-hand side, you'll see where we've been, our schedule and where we're going. So due diligence had, we, our, you know, site visits, research meetings, we've done that. You'll see in further slides, opportunity and constraints. We've done preliminary visioning, which is where we came up with the cornerstones. Again, meeting with staff, meeting with each other, big ideas. That's where we come up with, okay, we know we have to include the housing. We want social spaces. We want to maximize the circulation, make sure it works. And where we are now, which is presenting to you guys and to hopefully solicit some feedback. After that, once we get to that point and we can say, okay, we feel pretty good about this plan, environmental analysis can start. We can get further along on the specific plan, really getting the nuts and bolts in there. Then a specific plan review happens, environmental reviews happens, and then we get to the public hearing portion. For the fun stuff. So our existing site context, and it's always good to do this so we can see what's there. We can see what we can capitalize on. We can see where things might have to change. Of course, you have the two entries. We looked at prevailing winds, of course, the wonderful Veterans Memorial. Such a great little site right there. Traffic, the frontage, it's got great frontage along the, along the road. So that, that's always good for visibility and really can welcome residents in and visitors into the town center. And of course, the golf course. Then onsite conditions, which is also important because our, our goal is how can, what can we do maybe with the existing footprints with what we have to work with? We're not taking away the golf course. We're not shrinking or expanding the, the property area. So what do we have to work with and how can we capitalize on those good things? And then what types of obstacles do we have? So in the center, we have that little bit of open space, kind of that central building, which we found is a great opportunity. You have the Veterans Memorial, which absolutely represents the community, the feel, the, the wanting to honor those in the community who have served. And then the city buildings. And this is where I'll switch it over to the real fun stuff. And let, and let the creative come in and, and go from here.
Thank you, Julia. And as Julia mentioned, we're, we're at the visioning portion of our assignment here. So we think this is a tremendous opportunity to put the framework in place, to really bring in elements that make or will enhance the sent town center as a place, really kind of pedestrian focused, but still acknowledging that the vehicle is, is a part of it. So we think this image really highlights the elements that we'd like to bring in. You know, you have the pedestrian circulation that has some enhanced paving. It's buffered from the vehicles. There's nodes or amenities that can serve as wayfinding and monumentation. You know, it's, hey, let's meet by the Blue Gorillas and then go, you know, have some dinner. You know, areas of respite where you have benches that are shielded by, by trees. And then primarily keeping retail on the ground floor. And then the whole catalyst for this, this assignment is the residential component, which we feel would be most appropriate above the grade. Give the residents the views, get them off the, you know, the, the thoroughfares and the, the driveways and the noise. So this really, we think, kind of captures the, the essence of the, the vision. And how that translates into a diagram on the site. Starting at the, the center, we think a plaza that's kind of at the heart of the center really could make the center a destination. And then from that, radiating, radiating out pedestrian, enhanced pedestrian circulation where there's more connectivity for pedestrians. And on the, the east side, creating that as a pedestrian area with some amenities and nodes where you get the views, you can take a break, you know. You can throw the kids in a stroller and walk them along until they finally fall asleep. Those kinds of things. And then also around the plaza, we think City Hall created in Civic Center could be a really strong element there. Or maybe City Hall, the library, you know, City Hall can monitor activities and host activities on the plaza, you know, bring the farmer's market there. And then other plazas around that take advantage of, of the circulation and views and all the connectivity. And then getting to the golf cart, it's a big piece of the puzzle here. You know, setting up areas that could be designated golf cart parking. You know, that could draw even more residents over in their golf carts. And on that, there's the potential. We've talked about, maybe there's a bridge that's part of this that's probably far down the future. But, you know, there's big safety concerns with the golf carts crossing there. So getting to how we get the residential component here, which is really our, the, kind of the big part of our assignment here, is we looked at a few opportunity sites. You know, starting at the northeast corner there. You know, to get the number of units we need, we have to go a few stories up. But we think providing or provisioning for developing guidelines and standards that allow for mixed-use buildings that have a nice commercial retail front, parking tucked back and units above really kind of meets our vision objectives and the objectives of the state requirement for the units. So that's what those, if you look, the yellow rectangles are, are, are units that would be above. We refer to those as podium buildings, which are basically typically concrete ground level with normally it's wood frame, could be steel framed above. And part of what we're looking at is the economics of what could actually be built here. I think that covers my notes. So this highlights some of the, you know, the features we think that would be appropriate for the amenity spaces and how those could be used. Again, with the farmer's market that could be in that central plaza. We think that central plaza is really kind of the heart, could be the heart here where it's, you know, it's protected on three sides or two sides by buildings, accessible from another side. And you have the topography, the natural way the road slopes up that really gives you protection, but still open enough where that would really be a, a strong place to gather. And what we like to do on our specific plan assignments is we look at it of what could be there and develop, you know, you call them fictitious buildings, and then take that to really reverse engineer the guidelines and standards in the specific plan so that we know that it works, but still develop them so that we have flexibility. So we think that, you know, providing these mixed-use, vertical mixed-use buildings around the perimeter of the site. And we looked at, you know, maybe townhomes at the hotel site. Those feel appropriate adjacent to the, I think that's an apartment complex right there. The scale of that kind of leading into the, the town center along railroad seems appropriate. So what this does, you know, with our mixed-use buildings creates that front along the drive, kind of pushes the buildings out, but also preserves a lot of the retail that's there. So it's not, you know, we have these little pockets kind of down in the southeast corner there where there's a potential for a plaza there that could serve off of that retail building where maybe it's a restaurant with outdoor dining that spills out to there. And then same on the, the north side of that plaza, the, the south end there, where, you know, the retail can really take advantage of the outdoor spaces as well. And then house the parking for the residents above inside the building. So we know that we, we estimated, and we did, you know, in our CAD programs, about nineteen and a half acres here and about two hundred fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial and retail, almost nine hundred parking spaces. Based on the conversation earlier, we want to preserve as much of that commercial space as possible. So we think, you know, with our mixed-use buildings, we'll lose some floor area, but we would like to develop the, the standards so that there's potential to go multi-story on the, the commercial buildings if someone came in to redevelop those. You know, whatever economically makes sense, two or three stories with a retail ground floor, commercial above for offices or maybe service retail. So with this mapped out, there's the potential. Our target's a hundred and twenty-four units. So we can get with something about like this, around a hundred and eighty-eight is the potential. We're not saying that's what has to be built, but this allows us to develop our, our guidelines so that it's possible for developer to come in here. Guidelines are tailored to a building that's economical and it should fast-track any developer that comes in here and is able to start looking at an area to build. And this site, this plan also, I should point out, kind of gives you better indication of how the circulation, the pedestrian circulation with, you know, landscape, enhanced paving, how the, how it can connect through the site, you know, a little bit more activity along the perimeter, plazas sighted so that they take advantage of pockets and views and really create a, a destination, a place where people want to come and linger. And, you know, it's, it's more than just a park, shop and leave kind of, kind of scenario. We are at our presentation portion. From here, it's getting feedback, refinement, working with the web on the environmental, us refining our, our guidelines, our theming and really starting to, to put the, the package together and take it step by step with staff to, to develop and refine the specific plan. And with that.
Question?
Open it up to any comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm just looking at your concept drawings and, and seeing what other communities are doing in O C with taking a flat footprint and going up with it. So it looks like your concepts, you've got a ground floor of retail. The family use is like three stories above. So we've got a four-story building. Is that pretty much like the concept looks like?
Yeah, to preserve as much of the, the town center as possible and get the, you know, the state required unit count, we will need to go a bit vertical. The higher up you go, the less land you take up. So it's kind of a, a give and take, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when, in the calculations of using that model on parking, how did you come up with the parking that would be required for that many units? If they've got multiple cars or, you know, other things that, that sometimes you've got to take into consideration?
Right. For now, we're with kind of rules of thumb of what, you know, the parking ratios for units and, and parking. But, you know, there's an opportunity being a mixed-use center where there's shared parking, but there'll be analysis on that as we go that really locks in appropriate parking standards.
Okay.
And I think also, if I can add, there's, you know, different, it depends on, on, on what those residential uses are. So one of the thoughts was what's, you know, what's the, the, the move down market or this getting smaller? So once, you know, we love when people age in place and we love when people stay in their communities, you know, and be able to stay together. So if there are people who are ready to move out of their homes but want to downsize, simplify, move smaller, then where can they go? Well, you know, this would be a great opportunity where they can age in place. They can stay in town, in Canyon Lake. They can stay with their families but downsize into a smaller unit. So in that case, maybe they don't need two cars or more. So, so it really depends on what they use, what those homes are and, and, and adjust accordingly. And that's another great thing about having a mixed-use town center is you do take a lot of that trip out, you know, you don't need it as much. To go grab a coffee, you don't need to drive, so.
Also, along those lines, if you could maybe touch on, there wasn't anything in the presentation that really focused in on, on the parking and the subterranean aspect, but if you could maybe touch on that?
Sure. Can I, you want me to go back to the conceptual cycle? All right, so if we can flip back. And we can provide this, it's in a PDF, so you guys can have, can see it up close too after the fact.
So there, there is potential with the, you know, topography here that we can take advantage or developer can take advantage of that where, you know, garage entry is at a lower point, which becomes a partial subterranean. So part of the garage is screened but also, or, or hidden from view, but also provides that opportunity for additional parking, potentially without having to excavate as much and keep the cost within, within reason. And on that building C, kind of at the east portion, that's what we looked at when we developed that is utilizing the, the topography there where that one would have probably maybe a surplus of parking that could feed some of the retail use.
So the whole goal is that you provide enough parking that it stays on-site. You wouldn't have people trying to park on railroad or trying to park behind the gates and come over. That you would have to park within the standard and make sure that you meet those requirements.
You know, I, I look at this plan much like Pacific City. I don't know if you're familiar with it or not in Huntington Beach. They're limited on space due to the ocean, so they went underground. And all their parking is underneath the entire complex. Obviously, structural engineer and whatnot comes into play. But I feel as though this particular nineteen and a half acres is the prime example of that for underground parking. Also, going back to Huntington Beach, they also did the, the same plan in regards to, off of Beach Boulevard, they have several units that go ten to twelve stories high. And they have all commercial shops underneath. And they've done the same concept with Pacific City and had parking issues. And so they went underneath and provided those parking spaces for the units above. When I look at the, the plan for the future of Canyon Lake and, you know, I'm a huge component of the mixed use, a hundred percent. We have something very unique here that even our sister city doesn't have, which is a clean lake that people actually want to look at. Not a lot of people want to look at Lake Elsinore, but Canyon Lake, they, they definitely want to look at. It's a beautiful lake, beautiful amenities. With that said, you know, looking at ten, twelve, fifteen stories high and having those beautiful views up there, getting past everything to be able to see the lakes, I, I think that is an alternative too. Yes, it might be an eyesore from the road, but the benefits you get of the example you gave of mommy and dad moving across the street and the kids taking over the home and now they have this awesome little complex with a beautiful view and, you know. But I absolutely love the work that's been- But I absolutely love the work that's been done on this, you know, that's kind of my input when I, I spend a lot of time in HB and see a lot of, you know, plans that have been developed and what they've done, and I think a lot of those criterias is what we should probably look at as well, so.
I'm looking at potential site D, that's the hotel, right? I love the idea of turning that into a residential tomorrow.
And something like townhomes, which actually would offer, you know, maybe a move down buyer, but that may be your first time by a new couple or a couple with some real young ones who they want to get into the market, it's a great way to do it. And it adds some diversity throughout, you know, throughout that area too in terms of age.
Yeah, that's really smart.
It's a good transition into it. So, you know, we, underground parking is great, you know, there's so many good reasons for it, and I think.
Don't I speak loud enough? Underground parking is great and I, there's so many good reasons for it, and especially when you're landlocked, that's something we can absolutely put into the specific plan. I think we just want to plan for in case that can't happen financially from a developer, if you have to go underground and what that may hap, you know, what that does, but absolutely, and the intent of these is to have podiums, so you do have parking under the actual uses.
Yeah.
So yeah, we'll consider, we can consider that. Would you want to see it across the entire?
I think so, just because of this, parking right now, as if, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see it when it's jammed, I don't know if you've seen that or not.
Every time I've been there, it's been very crowded.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a poppin' place, there's a lot more golf cart drinking going on than you think, but it's very busy and, you know, that's just the commercial component of it. So now you throw in the potential of residential, and for me, as, as a young buyer, you gave that example with a, with a, you know, a couple kids and a wife, having parking is going to be the most crucial element, and it's, it's what Huntington Beach, Long Beach, even Costa Mesa now with their development with Triangle Square and Harborville, or I look at Orange County, they've been dealing with this, and if we have the opportunity to put something in place, I think parking is going to be one of the most crucial elements that we're going to have to tackle just because of the landlocked scenario that we have. You can't park on railroad canyon.
Right.
You can't park across the street because it's, you know, a gated community, POA paying members, so there's really nowhere to go.
Right.
And when you're spending two, three, four, $500,000 on a two-bedroom condo or whatever the prices might be if this ever happens, you're going to want to park your car in a secure location and make that a priority. So that would be my feedback.
All right.
But we're ready for it tomorrow, so if you guys can make that happen now, we're ready, so.
I look at this and it's a very dynamic change from what we have, the current places we have, it's kind of homey, but it, but it is 50 years older and it is kind of, it's probably seen its better days, and I think rather than just throw a coat of paint on it and say it's going to be great, that a dynamic move is probably needed. So that's, that's important. And my, my own, my biggest shortfall of this is, is our restaurants are in the center and, and we have literally some of the best views in the area for restaurants. And as far as patio dining and overlooking the golf course, to me, that should be a key element of what we do, but I don't see it necessarily in this plan. So I have a choice, I can go down to Menifee and I could sit in the shopping mall and I can eat and look at the parking lot, or I can go to Canyon Lake and I can go out on the patio and I can overlook a beautiful green grass golf course, and, and I think, I think that's our draw, and we have that, and to give that potential up, and I've been to Phoenix, I go there fairly often, and I see the outside dining and I see how important it is. I went to Big Bear and I wanted to go eat at this patio and it was a huge patio, probably sat 120 people, and they said, "Well, to get in the patio, it's an hour, but if you want to go inside, you can go right now." So we went inside because we're in a bit of hurry, and there we are, one of the three groups inside the inside restaurant. And so I, I think that something to consider is how do we get more patio dining overlooking the golf course? And that southern, south, the southern building on the, on the west side, yeah, on the west side, that, that currently has some of our restaurants, and what they back up to is a driveway and what they have is a little fire door going out. So instead of being able to go into that restaurant and go out onto a patio and overlooking the golf course, they get to open the fire door and look at a driveway. And I, I'm just, in my mind, there's some creative way to, to look at that and at least try to do better.
Well, let me, let me answer that just briefly too, because that is a discussion that had been had, and this is maybe the third or fourth iteration of, of this that we're looking at, and we did add spaces on the back of those buildings facing the, the golf course for, for that purpose, that was not built out that way before. So I think that's an excellent point, that we really need to capitalize on all of the, all of the viewpoints all around the building, all of, all of the buildings and in between the buildings, on the backside of the buildings. And I think that's, that's going to be very important.
Madam Mayor, if I may, it just, you know, I'm sorry to go back to Orange County, but it's just, it's where they're doing it, right? It's just where it's happening, at least what we want. Another example that comes to mind is Irvine, and Irvine has done a phenomenal job, not only the Irvine Company, but also different builders at building complexes, and in the center of their complexes, they do restaurants and they do outdoor dinings that's open to the public. They have rooftop dining experiences in Irvine, I got a few clients that live in those condos, and I think that's a prime example of which Councilman Welty is bringing up, especially on the two outer ones for the golf course. But the question that I really have is, is have we ran a drone or done any type of idea of what kind of height we would have to be at to see the lake? Because I mean, I just, I need to pull my drone out and do it myself, I guess, but I'm just curious, I'm just curious if it's even, if it's even doable to, to put that in the plan, that in order to obtain, you know, the name rooftop whatever, lake view whatever, complex, you know, you have to get to the 10th story in order to have lake views to oversee into Canyon Lake, you know, or is one side the golf cart side, you know, the golf course side? So I think that would be something that, that needs to, to be identified, is what story would it take legitimately, because now we just started, right? Because now we got where you can start living and see these lake views and we can go up from there, and at the very top is where Dale's hanging out waiting for all of us, you know, sipping on a whatever you drink, Diet Coke for me, and, and that's, that's kind of how we do it.
I have the solution.
Let's hear it.
I have the solution. Obviously, anytime you get above the fourth floor, you're starting to move into high-rise criterias and everything goes with that, so your building standards are changed. So that's the other thing, when you get beyond three to four stories, your model changes in how you got to do it, which is doable. I mean, I just down South Bay, I was just in North County and everybody's changing their heights, so the four and five-story buildings are more common than two stories. But a hilltop restaurant would solve a lot of view issues, so another planning issue.
Mayor Pertensmith, I'd like to just comment on that briefly. One of the things that became really evident when we were going through this is just the really significant elevation change from railroad canyon until you get to the back of the site. And I suspect that even a four-story building, you know, on the third or fourth floors and certainly on the rooftop, that you might have some like nice lake views up there, but I think what I'm hearing you say is that we need to add money in the budget for a drone.
You can borrow mine. That's really what's stuck out, Chris. You gotta get it in the air.
I have one more.
But I do, but I do like the concepts that you guys have presented, that is, it goes in line with our SB2 funds, it goes in line with progressive community growth and addressing as a community ages what we needed to do or what we need to do. So I, I believe, obviously, there's a lot of discussion that has occurred, parking and height and lots of other stuff, restaurants, all appropriate, but I really think this is a good step for us moving forward in the future planning of our community, and I thank you for the concepts.
I have one more comment, and I'm going to bag on Orange County, we've been sticking up for it, but I'm going to tell you how bad it is. The reality is, is the parks in Canyon Lake, I think were designed by somebody who lived on the beach, because I see the moms out there when their kids are all lined up under that, that tree shade, right? Not the branches, just the tree. And so our parks were not designed to be shady, they, they should have been designed by somebody who came from Phoenix and says, "We know how to deal with 120." So when you do these outdoor areas, remember, we are not Orange County, we get very warm, and the time of the year we want to be out is often, you know, during the hot part of the year. The wonderful part about here that is in Phoenix is that it does cool off in the evening. We get kind of an ocean breeze and it's pretty bearable in the evening, but during the day it can be pretty miserable, it can really take, when you got to kind of run from shade structure to shade, like when I go to Phoenix and I got, I got to run from building to building to building as I, as I work my way down the street, because I don't want to get turned into smoke as I'm crossing the street, and just to be aware of that.
Yeah, that became apparent to us today when we were just trying to find a place to sit down and kind of run through this, is where, you know, where are we going to sit that it's shady and we can just, you know, have a chat? So drove that point home.
So just for clarification, obviously Jim's seeking input and looking at, you know, modifications or positive feedback and stuff, so how is that avenue open? Is it open just to us, open to, to city citizens? Is there a method for that, or is it in-house?
I can take that one, Jim. Now, this is again, just kind of the preliminary feedback on, on the overall vision. There will be a public hearing, a part of this process, also, we envisage at some point, depending on what's going on with COVID, having some, some additional outreach, public outreach on, on the overall plan. But there will be a public hearing part of this, will be plenty of opportunity for, for general public input on the plan as well, yeah.
Any other comments from council, questions from council?
I just think you guys did a good job, it's, I mean, without talking to us, you talk to us, that's pretty cool. I got, I mean, I wish I could do it with my wife, but I just really like what I saw here tonight, and I think making some of those little changes and if you guys do come back out and do whatever you need to do, let me know, I mean, I would be more than happy to, I'm serious, you know, to do that, if you guys want to take some shots of what that would look like on the fourth or fifth story or something like that, to add to the plan, especially before we go to the public hearing component of it. So feel free to, to reach out to me and we'll make that happen, okay? Appreciate you guys.
We've been talking about it, that's why I keep looking at it. We need a drone, man.
Are there any public comment on this item?
No comments on this item.
Okay. Well, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you. We're excited to be here and we're excited to be a part of this, so thank you very much.
Outstanding. Okay, we are moving on to item number nine. This is an agreement, and I believe the city manager is going to introduce this.
This item is also for our city planner, Jim Morrison. It's a big night for Jim.
You mentioned item number nine, and I thought that sounds familiar. We've been talking about housing elements, residential development and whatnot, and this item kind of follows in line with that. State law requires that when you update your housing elements, you also update your safety element. So as part of the general plan, we have seven basic elements, I itemized those in the, the staff report, kind of to cut to the chase with the, the particular consultant, so we went out to bid, we, we obtained three different proposals, we're proposing the selection of DUDAC based upon their experience in the county. In fact, it's ironic that this evening we had the MSHCP discussion on the agenda because they had very strong input, they were one of the lead consultants in the biological effort as part of that evaluation. So they have long time experience in the county, they also have a broad breadth that we felt the other consultants did not have with regard to fire protection and geologic. And lastly, I thought it was appropriate to mention, as I did in the staff report, of the balance between the environmental analysis and the actual document preparation. So for one particular firm, I think it was 10%, another one, it was like 50% on the environmental, which seemed to be too little and too lopsided, and theirs was also more proportional. So along with the staff experience, and I felt more of their focus, that staff felt comfortable with regard to that particular selection. So the recommendation this evening, I don't have the staff, here we go, that the council direct the city manager to obtain an executed agreement with DUDAC using the city standard professional services contract for a sum not to exceed $60,845 to update the safety element of the general plan as required by state law. Be happy to respond to any comments.
I got a few questions.
Yes.
DUDAC, is it?
DUDAC.
Okay, what other cities have, have they worked with?
They've worked with a variety of, of cities, as I mentioned, with the MSHCP was over this portion of the county. I have, I have their proposal with me, just, just not here.
Jim, I might just add, DUDAC is quite a large company, they, they do a, work with an awful lot of public agencies, not just cities, but special districts as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to justify the means of a $10,000 increase, been proposed at 50, going up to 60, additional cost of $10,845, so with some guidance of like, yeah, you know, Menifee uses them, Lake Elsinore, Wildomar, something that relates to at least me, some buzzwords that would make sense on the credibility of DUDAC versus EPC or even Atlas Planning that comes at a bid of $40,000. What are we getting, you know, for the 60 as opposed to that?
I would agree. Unfortunately, I don't have that handy and I don't recall precisely what, what those jurisdictions were. I do know that they're, they've done a lot of work in San Bernardino County and in Riverside County for particular jurisdictions, so I believe Rialto and/or Fontana, they were doing work for, they've done work for some water districts, San Diego area, they've done a lot of work, so it's, it's fairly broad breadth in Southern California in general. No, I can't tell you the specific cities, I'm sorry.
Okay, can I ask a question on the criteria? If we had two other bidders and they were less, is it they're less qualified or they just don't have the creds, or what, what was the determining factor of why you recommended this company versus maybe one of the other bidders?
I think it was, well, for me, or for staff, I'd have to say, the, it's the depth of experience and their longevity. So the other two firms had not been in existence that long. DUDAC has, has a more extensive long-term experience than them. One of the discussions I had with them was the fire aspect. I didn't feel that the geologic and the fire were adequate in the other firms. They had somehow met that need, but they didn't seem to demonstrate that need. And when I say met the need, they have, are working on safety element updates, but I couldn't see that they really had individuals that were really strong in that. They may have had a geologist, but they didn't necessarily have a fire person or vice versa. So I didn't think that the, the skills were necessary there to address not only our condition of potential flooding and wildfires, but the general geologic hazards that exist in this part of the county.
Dale, any questions? Jeremy, anything else?
Yeah, you know, for me, I think more credentials, it's just a lot of money, it's a difference, I mean, it's a big difference when I look at these, you know, I know where Larry's coming from, because we sit on these regional boards and we get these type of bids all the time, and staff comes with us, and usually, I would say probably nine out of 10 times with the regional boards I sit on, it's the middle bidder or something, they compete against each other, and, you know, they do that. So I'm just trying to get enough information from you to justify, you know, a $10,000, almost $11,000 increase on a plan that we're putting together, paperwork, and I know it's more than that, I know, I know it's a safety plan, it's a bigger deal. So I'm just trying to, before I make a decision, justify the means of that type of increase, especially with sitting on the finance committee, some of the big decisions that we have to make moving forward and some of the, the allocations of funds that we're already going through. So I know for me, before I make a decision, I would like some more credentials that would relate more to here locally with some of the other cities. that would relate more to here locally with some of the other cities as opposed to San Bernardino County. But some of maybe the sister cities, if they've used them before, just because that's a big price, you know, compared to the others.
Madam Mayor, if I may. This is, you know, obviously something that Mr. Morrissey brought to me, and we discussed. And he recommended that we go in this direction, and I concurred with that recommendation. The safety element of our general plan is very important. Providing for public safety is one of the most important things that we do. And in his analysis of the firms that bid, Jim felt very strongly that DUDAC was just the most qualified and had the most applicable experience to the issues that we're dealing with. Issues of, you know, wildfires, issues of potential flooding, geological issues here in Riverside County that DUDAC has that specific experience with that the other firms don't seem to. And so, I think really that's the reason why, you know, it's a difference of $10,000, $11,000. But because of the importance of the safety element of our general plan, we thought it made the most sense to go with the firm that was most clearly qualified to do the work. That's not to say the other firms are not qualified, and they might do a fine job for us. We just didn't want to take that risk with the safety element of our general plan. So, that's the reason for the recommendation. But it's certainly up to the council. We can certainly go a different direction, but that's the reason for the recommendation.
Do you have additional questions?
I have a question. How much of the general plan update refers to the POA part of the city? Are they reinvestigating the part that's really essentially developed? Or is the general plan referring to more of a future project side, like the center here?
No, it's the entire city.
So, they're like a-
The entire jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay. Okay, thank-
Are there any other questions? Are there any comment cards?
No comments.
The request is a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation on item nine, which is the DUDAC bid. Is there a motion?
Can we pull this item? I know it's in business. And bring it back with a little more information for myself and the rest of the council, specifically on, obviously, the recommendations that you have were solid enough that it was above the bid that the other bidders had. But just to have some assurances that we are making the right decision here. I mean, it's $10,000, almost $11,000 bucks. And I'm sure the other firms have got qualified personnel, but you're our expert. But I'd like some feedback that Councilman Smith had as far as projects they worked on here locally. And then give us a little more on that side so that we feel comfortable with this decision.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Jim, are there any time constraints we need to be aware of here?
No.
Okay.
Well, I think this could be-
We can certainly do that.
Could be pulled, addressed, and brought back to us next council meeting. Then we go right from there. I mean, that's a month. And give us the time to procure that information, and then go from there.
Madam Mayor, just, I was wondering if you could email us a copy of the current general safety plan, or the safety element of the general plan, so we can kind of take a look at what we have now and get some sense of where we're going. I think that at least would be helpful for me to see the existing safety element of the general plan.
If I can just mention to the council, that is on our website. So, if you want to access-
It's on the city website?
On the city website.
It is. It's posted. So, I understand.
So, you have a motion?
I'll second the motion from Councilman Green. So, basically, that's, yeah, I'll second that. Bring it back.
I guess we would need a roll call vote then.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to bring the item back.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number 10, award of a construction contract.
Yes, I'd like to have our administrative services manager, Mike Borha, make the presentation on this and the next items.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Tonight, city staff is recommending that city council adopt the plans and specifications for the Railroad Canyon Road striping and signage improvement project and award the contract to CAT Tracking Incorporated for the sum not to exceed of $126,900. This project will revise the existing striping along Railroad Canyon Road, both east and west side, and include green bike pavement legends throughout the extent of the roadway within city limits. The striping improvements will also assist in helping the right turn pockets standouts at both SkyLink Drive and Big T Drive. In addition, the project will also improve the visibility of the center medium striping signage for all the Railroad Canyon Road. The screen, although it doesn't do much justice to really show a lot of these improvements, but more importantly, you can kind of see some areas that show the actual, the bike legend, that's the bike legend that's we're going to be going throughout all of Railroad Canyon Road. It's kind of, there are some of the dark markings there at the bottoms there and at the top. I have a better picture that will kind of show that. The project will also include what I had brought forward, I believe, I've been last year, when I went over the SB1 project, where a lot of the noses to the mediums will get painted yellow. A lot of the yellow striping will be included throughout those areas. Additional striping, white stripings along Railroad Canyon Road that have, over the time, have kind of deteriorated. Signage will be improved out there too as well. Let me just go over to the one image that I'm referring to with the bike lanes.
Wow, that looks great.
So, this is kind of like a new standard that's been adopted by most cities. This is actually a picture in the city of Marietta. But you can see this type of bike legend throughout Orange County, Riverside County. It's a very common way of distinguishing those areas. So, that's going to be a huge improvement to what we have out there. But again, keep in mind too, a lot of the yellow striping that has been deteriorated on the center mediums will get all restripped. A lot of the white stripings that also too, that go along the entire mediums on both east and west side will be also repainted. There's going to also be some areas where we're going to include the 45 mile an hour speed limit signs also too in some of the intersections, particularly more of the main one, right here in front of the center. So, big improvements that this project will do. And although it's hard to really tell on these particular sides, but if I can go back to SkyLink, this was, SkyLink poses an issue with both the right turn from SkyLink and Railroad Canyon Road. So, this project will actually include some, what they call channelizing lane striping, that on the right turn that you'll see there. So, because if you know, most people will just kind of blow by that turn lane and just keep going straight on Railroad Canyon Road. Same thing with Big T, Big T Drive. So, there's going to be some improved striping in that whole area to hope to try to prevent that from happening. So, also too, the staff is also recommending that city council adopt the plan specifications and award the contract to CAT Tracking Incorporated and authorize a construction contingency of 20% that of any unforeseen construction costs or things that could also come up from time to time. That's why the actual amount is actually $126,900. That includes that 20% contingency. So, we're seeking council's approval to award the contract to CAT Tracking Incorporated. Questions?
This will be gas tax?
Yes, it is. It's actually SB1 funds-
Okay.
That will trigger this, but it's actually gas tax as well.
I have a couple of questions. One, so what you're saying, SkyLink bothers me. I mean, it always bothers me that it narrows down. And I know we can't wave a magic wand and make it fix, but-
Yeah.
So, you're talking this bicycle lane with the green is going to be what SkyLink is going to look like?
It's going to be something that's going to provide a little bit more visibility.
So, you're going to see the bike lane go past SkyLink, so the cars will clearly see that SkyLink, the lane narrows. I-
But not only that, but it's hard to tell in that one particular image. And, but, I don't know if I can go up there. This doesn't have a laser pointer? Okay.
I see it right there.
It's right there on the top of there. You see that little island? Right up there? And I'm going to also go to here where you can probably see a little bit better on Big T. You see this here?
Yeah, I see that.
The intention is so that people don't drive straight. So, when they see this here-
Okay.
Their assumption is they've got to move over right away.
Just to be honest here, I think in the long run, we've got to do something about that. I think the fact, I went one day when I had nothing to do, which is pretty rare. I took an Orange County map of freeways, and I overlaid basically it over Riverside. And Orange County has probably twice the number of freeways per square miles we are square mile that we have. In a sense, this road is, has to take a place, not necessarily a freeway, but what would normally be a freeway. People are going to go down the 74, and they're going to go down Railroad Canyon. At some point, this narrowing down into two lanes is going to be a problem, I think. And I know we cannot kind of fix it with paint today. But at least in the long run, I think we need to do something about it. And that's just my thoughts.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Well, now we know what Dale does on a Friday. No, I'm just kidding. A couple things. I know, Mike, that we've talked a little bit about this, but are we looking at adding like reflectors or lights or anything along those lines?
Yeah, that's all included.
Is that included as well?
Well, the lights, we're potentially looking at the idea of maybe adding the, what you see now too, is kind of a new thing that's been added to, is the yellow striping around the signal lights.
Right.
That is also something that we're actually looking into doing as well. But reflectors are part of that too as well. But the reflectors will be part of the mediums.
Okay. So, I know that I had mentioned, you know, I think it would be awesome if we had reflectors for the walking path, obviously, across Road Canyon, the main, right by Pepe's, right there.
Yeah.
That turns on when people are walking. So, at nighttime, it's really safe. It's a bold statement. The other thing, have we, we're not going with green, are we?
For the bike lane?
Yeah.
We are.
Can we go with blue? To match the theme of-
Blue is not kind of considered a standard.
Because it's handicap. So, they use green.
Yeah, that's been the typical standard for those particular lanes.
But Canyon Lake's not standard? Come on, we do our own thing.
I get that, but unfortunately, I think we-
We've got to go with green, huh? You're going to do it, aren't you?
Yeah.
You're going to green this place up. All right. Hey, I just want to say, you know, kudos to our mayor. I know she's working hard on projects that pertain to this. And, you know, you've been dealing with several constituents in the community on addressing some of these issues. So, hats off to you, hats off to you, Mike, on the hard work, and our city manager for putting up with all the rhetoric on it. But awesome job, awesome job.
And if I can mention to you, you know, as you mentioned about improving the pedestrian areas, that is also a project we're looking to do in the upcoming future.
Good. That's awesome.
As part of SB1.
I love it. All right, appreciate it.
My comments are, I appreciate this very much, because when we brought this to you, you hit the ground running. Some people may think it has been slow, but it has been steady progress throughout.
It took a while, it took a while. Fortunately, COVID did kind of affect us moving as quickly as we wanted to. But it's here, and it'll get resolved soon.
The other thing I really appreciate is that you didn't just take the issues that were brought to you, you expanded it to say, let's do this all at once, so it is efficient and even better.
More, it's more cost effective to do it that way. There was other areas that we needed to address as well.
Right.
So, I think it's an overall win by just doing the entire roadway of Railroad Canyon Road.
Yeah, safety facelift.
Yes.
Forgive me, but did you already cover the funding source for this?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
These are funds that we have received already. Well, it's funds that we get as part of SB1 funds every year- Thank you. As projects that we've listed. And I'll go into it in the next kind of staff report too on. That's a little base on that too. Thank you.
I'm super excited about this. And is there a public comment on this?
No comments.
Okay. Yes, I do need a motion and a second to approve-
Motion.
The recommendation.
Second.
And roll call.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, item 11?
Okay, the next staff report. Staff is recommending city council adopt resolution number 2021-25 approving the fiscal year 2021-22 project list for Senate Bill 1, also known as the Railway Repair Accountability Act of 2017. Prior to receiving any appropriate funds from RMRA funds from the California State Controller's Office in a fiscal year, the city must submit to the commission an adopted project list proposed to utilize those funds. For fiscal year 2122, Canyon Lake is projected to receive approximately $225,62 from RMRA funds. In the staff report, there is a list of the actual projects that we have provided to them. These projects can also consist of previous projects that we have listed before in the past. And it's something that we recommend, because typically, a lot of times, the costs that we have allocated from previous years isn't always enough to cover the cost of those projects. So, what we like to do is to also kind of still list those projects where funds can still be used for those in particular. However, on this particular list, we'll go in over the previous projects, which was the striping improvements. I think initially, we had projected that cost would be somewhere around close to $75,000. But as you can see in the previous staff report, it went up to $126,000, which is a perfect reason why we still list these projects for the next upcoming fiscal years. Salwal Repairs is also a project that we've had on that list before. So, we're looking to add additional funds into that. The pedestrian crosswalk that has been talked about too as well, funds to go in towards that. The new project that we've listed in here for 2122 is the Railroad Canyon lighting improvements. What we're looking to do there is to improve the overall lighting along the center median of all Railroad Canyon Road. Very similar to what you see just west of here in the city of Lake Elsinore. If you notice down Railroad Canyon Road, if you look at the mediums, there are actually streetlights. I don't know how far spaced apart they are, but we're looking to want to do the same thing here too in Railroad Canyon Road. In Canyon Lake, there's a lot of areas, especially on the, sort of the east end of Railroad Canyon Road where the lighting is pretty poor. So, we want to improve the overall lighting for the entire stretch that we have. At the time, when that time comes, when we determine the type of lighting, we want to make sure that it's lighting that's going to be appropriate for the area. And what I mean by that, it's really intended just for the streetway, and that's something that's going to be an issue for the residents that live along Railroad Canyon Road. So, that's sort of one of the new projects. So, staff is asking for city council to approve resolution number 2021-25 to approve the fiscal year 2122 project to SB1.
Any questions? Sounds like a good idea. Any public comment?
No comments.
I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to adopt resolution number 2021-25.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Item number 12 is Terry?
Yes. I'll have our finance director, Terry Shea, make the presentation on this item.
Hungry, Terry. Your honourable mayor, Member of City Council. Sorry for the loss of Jordan. It was one of the things I looked forward to on Wednesdays, was Jordan coming in. You know, he's just so friendly and really, truly cared about people. So, I didn't hear about it till I got here. So, I was like, so, all right. about it until I got here, so I was like, so, all right. Is it on the thing? What do I have to press to get it to go? Right arrow, okay. So what we have here is the first draft of the city's proposed budget. Just want to thank the whole staff. They worked tremendous amount of hours trying to put this thing together over and over and over again, and I keep all the, the changes so I don't lose them, and so I could show you the binder of the hours that staff spent on this budget, so. So what we have here is, this is just the general fund revenue detail. Our main source of revenue are taxes, which is the base property tax, which is our share of the 1%. And then property tax fire, which is a structure fire tax we get. The VLF swap, that budget there of $996,600 for last year, I got within $4 of the actual. That was pretty impressive, so. And then the other big one is the utility users' tax, which is higher this year because I think more people are home, more electricity, more stuff. And then the refuse disposal and that, so the majority of our revenues come from taxes, 5.3 million. And then license and permits, 1.3 million. The big one is the EMS subscription fee, which I think we will exceed the budget for the current year, but I just want to be conservative because I have no history on this revenue, so. And then sadly, we lose the rent from the library. That was another number I could always get, like, almost to the dollar, so, but not, not anymore. Interest income is still dropping, the rates we're getting are, are just not worth even investing. And so we do have some grants this year. We have a CDBG grant of $23,000, and then we have the planning grants for the LEAP in SB2, that's about $85,000. So a little bit higher this year on the, or a little lower, but because of the CARES Act revenue. And then fines and forfeitures have actually increased this year, which is surprising. We used to be around $30,000, $40,000, you know, 15 years ago, but they've kind of dropped. Miscellaneous 20, so total revenue is 6.8 million. And if you look back just two years, that, that first column there, that's actual numbers from about two years ago, and that's 5.3, so we've gone up quite a bit in the, in the two years, three years. This kind of shows you where our revenues come from. So property tax, VLF swap, fire structure fee, property taxes, utility users' tax, the franchise fees, and then the EMS, that's the bulk of our revenues. And then this is the sum of all the revenues by fund, so in that, gas tax fund is that RMRA plus gas tax, Measure A. The AQMD is the money we've accumulated, we buy the, the vehicles with. And then the law enforcement grants, that goes up every year by about $5,000, so that'll be about 160. The rental, we'll get about 113,000. So total revenues for the whole city is just a little under 8 million. And then these are the expenditures. So you can see, as the revenues went up, our expenditures went up, but we're looking at, for general government, which is city council, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, finance, and the public works, facilities, which is the maintenance of the buildings and all this, and the electricity. So we're at 1.5 million. Developmental services, which is planning, and planning is high because there's a lot of the grants that we're doing and the, and the stuff like that, so there's, that's in there. Building and safety, that number is, I'll have to get to that when we get to that. Public Works Administration, NPDES, 83,000, then code enforcement. So in the development services, the only one we have salaries charged to is code enforcement, and the others are mostly contract. So this is the interesting part here, law enforcement, I think we went up, what, 5%? Chris, is that what it was? Yeah. And so then the fire medical aid county, that looks low because that's six months, and that's what the county sent over. And then the city fire department, that's our own cost, and we'll, we'll get to a slide later that shows what that's made of. Emergency preparedness, about the same, and animal control, pretty close to the same because our numbers were, were close. So you can see, we're still on the point where we spend most of our money on public safety, so about 65% of the budget, so. And so then here's the, what I'm estimating as the general fund and all these fund balances, I think the general fund's going to be about $300,000 higher than that to begin with, so about 4.5 million. And so we'll end with about a $4 million fund balance after next year, and that includes a loss of about $500,000. So gas tax money, we always accumulate and use when we do Railroad Canyon maintenance every five or six years, we rehab that thing. Measure A, and that's also. So law enforcement money, what we try to do is, is match the, the revenue with the expense, so we transfer money over to the general fund to cover the, the expenses. And miscellaneous grants, the rental fund, which is fairly new, and then the capital projects fund, we have 338,000 available. So here's the city council department. Not a lot of change, so 137, 149. The increase is in promotion and advertising, and so, any, stop me if you have any questions on any of these. And then here's the city attorney. We've increased the amount that, per month, and then there's some items in there for code and stuff like that. Here's the city manager, and all these variations in the print and stuff, I'll fix all that before the final budget, so. And so city manager, we moved the, the fire chief's contract into this, we had it over in the fire department, but that's out there, so it's a little higher. So salaries and wages, benefits, this reflects the city manager's new contract with the benefits of wages. And I don't know if you formed council what the projected step raises this year are?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me to do it now, or you want to do it later? Oh, it's okay. So the cost of living, I think, was 2.4 for our area, and so we gave all employees a step plus cost of living. So pretty much everybody was budgeted a raise, so.
Actually, cost of living was 3.6, but we have a, we have a cap at 3.5.
Was it?
Yeah, so we went with a 3.5 COLA.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
It was 2.4 in Rolling Hills, so LA County was left, so. So we have office expense, office supplies. Most of the city's office supplies are purchased out of the city manager's department. Professional specialized services, there's quite a bit in there. So it looks like it went up a lot, but there are items in there, like the, all the projects that we're doing. Any questions on any of this? City clerk, we just have one employee, full-time employee, and then we charge some of the part-time girls there, or part-time employees, I shouldn't say girls, sorry. So office expense, departmental expense, and then the military banner, that's a little higher this year. Training and education, that includes the, I think it includes the $2,500 for the school. And so this department went down actually a little, which is good. Oh, the big reason it went down is the cost of the elections not in there this year, so that was about 30 grand last year, so. Finance department, which we usually hit pretty good. Has to be a typo as to why it went up so much, which I'll have to figure that out, so.
Well, it, it might be because our accountant is in this department, who's now full-time.
That's a good reason. There you go. Thanks, Chris. How could I mess up my own department? This might help me a little bit, so.
Right, Terry, I know the nerves are getting to you, it's your first time doing this.
Oh. I know what, I think it's my 20th budget, so. So what that 38,000 is, we, every year, the city has to pay on their unfunded portion of the person liability.
Right.
And we were spreading it between all the departments, but it really doesn't reflect on payroll or benefits, so we took it out here and identified it separately, and those numbers are what we get from the state, and that's exactly what we're going to have to pay, that 38,000. And so that's why it's higher, plus a full year. Oh, I guess Caleb's here full year, I'm sure. And then the audit expense went up 2,000, but still, that's fairly low. So any questions on finance?
Yeah.
Good job.
So the next department is? And so what's included in the planning department totals this year is 234,000, but you have a lot of that is general plan services, and then the regular planning is, is 50,000, so. And you were just here with the planners saying the stuff that they're doing, but specific plan and all that stuff. And so the housing element is like 35,000, the specific plan 95,000, the safety plan 14, but that's going to have to change. And then the professional fees for other plans is 90,000. Any questions on planning? Okay, the building and safety department, this is basically the plan checking and inspections. And so that number is based on 95% of the revenues that were taken in, so we're estimating we'll collect over that in revenues. And then law enforcement, we get this budget from the police department every year, and so you can see we went, we went up a little bit, but we're going to transfer 180,000 of that number. The, the police service's total contract was a million 958, and then they had 22,000 in extra duty, and then we're going to offset 180,000 of that with CalCOP's money, and so that's the 1,800,000. And the rest of this budget is, is pretty comparable to the prior year. And those numbers usually come in fairly accurate, but one thing, the facility rate dropped 27,000 by move into Lake Elsinore, so that's good. The city's going to get the automatic plate license reader cameras, so that's 6,000. So I'll have to stop driving my stolen car out here, so.
Where are those plate readers going to go?
That would be a question for the city manager.
We haven't identified the exact locations yet. Lieutenant Rails and I have talked about a couple of ideas, but it's yet to be determined exactly where they'll go.
So then the fire and medical. Now, this is the old, our budget as usual for fire, and this includes six months of county, CALOES, and so you can see the difference between 2.2 million and the 1,222. And so the utilities, departmental expenses, all those have been prorated, prorated down a little bit because of the year.
So this is six months?
Six months. And then this is the new city fire department. I'll have the chief go in, he has some slides that kind of goes over in more detail, and so he can come up when, when I get through here.
What was the total on the six months again? Was it 1,000,000 something?
Uh, 1,041.
That's the next slide, Terry.
Which one? You want six months of the county?
Are you talking about CAL FIRE or the city's six months?
CAL FIRE.
CAL FIRE, okay.
So it's a million?
Six months on city fire was, how much?
Oh, city fire is 1,700,000, but there is...
Startup. That includes the startup cost.
There's 735,000 startup cost.
Yeah, so it's actually...
Oh, 937, yeah.
And this emergency preparedness, not much change from the prior year. I think a little more departmental expenses.
Actually, let me, let me address that briefly. So this one jumps from about, well, we had a 26,000 up to 49,000. In previous years, the services of county emergency management department was included in our contract with the county for, for our fire services. Countywide, they're changing that model and they're, they're breaking it out, so each city now contracts directly with county EMD, and so that's why we, we see the...
It's estimated to be 25,000, so.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, was the county, since they're taking these costs and separating it out across the county, I'm assuming anyone who pays into, you know, the county system as far as using CAL FIRE, is that taken out of the cost? Have you seen?
Yes.
Or talked to other city managers that now, that 25, or how much is it? 25 grand, 30, 40 grand?
No, it's, it's, well, so we're budgeting 25,000 for the year, it varies from city to city. Our actual costs that were included in our contract for fire services, our actual costs for EMD services were about 32,000 a year. So we actually negotiated with them based on our perceived needed level of service, and so I think the actual's going to be somewhere between 20 and 25,000, but we, we put 25,000 in the budget just to make sure that we, we cover ourselves here.
But just for clarifications, other cities?
Yes.
They're not paying that anymore, obviously. It's not being, so CAL FIRE is not charging that fee as well?
Every city in the county who wants the services of county EMD will now have to contract separately for that, every, every city in the county.
Okay, so there'll be a reduction across all cities?
Correct.
Of the amount, for us, it would have been 32 grand?
Correct.
Towards the bill for CAL FIRE?
Correct, and larger cities, we're, we're paying quite a bit more.
Substantial.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I do have a question. On this EMD, a lot of cities have their own EMD and it's usually under fire or law enforcement. Are we planning to move it eventually away from the county?
I don't think the plan is to take it entirely in-house. The county provides a lot of support. Administrative manager, Mike Borah, has a lot of experience in, in this area, as you know, but he has found, I think, and he could tell you better than I can, that, that the support from county EMD has really been invaluable, especially when it comes to reimbursements, grant applications, general preparedness for emergencies. Also, of course, the, the county has their own emergency, emergency operations center, which is brought to bear to help us when, when the need arises. And so we feel that we do get quite a bit of, of services from them. I do envision that they'll be working closely with our fire department when our fire department opens. And I think some of what Mike Borah has been doing, that area may shift over to the fire department, but we still have to work out those details. We, we do feel it's important to maintain that support from county EMD.
All right, so then the next one is animal control. Included that 109,000 is 42,000 for animal control services, and then 67,000 for the county sheltering. And then in the debt service, there are bonds that were issued by the authority to build the shelter, and so our share of the debt service is 30,000, and then we, we have a fee to, because they're audited annually, so we have to pay a portion of that audit plus their admin fees, and that's the... It went down this year because our count went down, and so it, it dropped about 18, 19,000 or 21,000, which is good. Public works, kind of a placeholder as we identify stuff during the year, so. This is the NPDES, not a lot of change, pretty straightforward. Code enforcement, so salaries dropped just a little due to the, the breakdown of the staffing, whereas before, we had a higher level person. And so, as corresponding benefits fell as well, and so then you see personal total 275, down about 3,000. The other costs up about 10,000, so, and a lot of that is training and education, and so not a lot of change in code enforcement. Building facilities maintenance, so we have communications, and then the rents and leases, that's for the office upstairs. And then the utilities for all the buildings are there, and then membership dues and publications, and the professional specialized services. The big one in there is janitorial and the elevator service, and then there are some equipment costs that we've added, and some of those are furniture equipment, and then an ADA project for 23,100, and I think that's going to be reimbursed with the, the CDBG This is an expenditure summary by fund, so you can see how it's changed over the years as well. And then this is the chief's. Just one last thing before the chief comes up. So you have the, the budget in front of you, I don't know if you looked at it or went through it, but for the general fund, there's a projected $517,000 deficit, but there's about 735,000 in startup costs for the fire department, so that's where that's at, so. If there's no other questions on the budget, I'll let the chief go over his slides.
Just real briefly, I'd like to comment on that. I mean, I think that's a very important point because our, our budget is very healthy now, and we know that we're going to run a deficit next fiscal year because we're starting fire department. An important distinction is that it's a planned... An important distinction is that it's a planned deficit, it's not a structural deficit. Were it not for starting up a fire department next year, we'd be running a surplus of over two, probably over two-hundred-thousand dollars next year. So we're gonna incur these one-time costs to start the fire department. At the end of next year, we still anticipate having very healthy reserves, much higher than what is kind of standard as a percentage of our operating costs. And then the expectation is moving forward that we'll be saving money every year over what we're expending for fire service currently, so... It's always a little nerve-wracking when you're planning on having a deficit, but overall, our budget is very healthy.
Good job, Terry.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, and as everyone else already said earlier, my sympathy only got to work with him for a very short time, but in that short time, he had so much support for what we're doing, what you decided to do, and I just want to say again, my condolences. So for the first time here, we wanted to break out the fire department, talk about it, and explain where these numbers are coming from, but I think it's important to go back a little bit first to understand why the numbers are what they were. So obviously, ESCI, the Emergency Services Consulting International, gave you a presentation on July thirteenth. And in their initial presentation, the budget that they proposed was based off of salaries and benefits that mirrored much closer to Cali Mesa. And some of the comments from the city council at the time was that it seemed extremely low. And there was direction given to ESCI to come back and look at it, and, you know, they were asking, well, you know, you got the low end of Cali Mesa, you've got the high end of CAL-Fire, you know, where do you wanna be? And they took it to be somewhere in the middle. And so they came back and made three amendments to the original proposal, and what you see there on the slide is one of their amendments, and that's what they call a middle range, and that was a salary range that was between Cali Mesa and CAL-Fire. And so if we went with that salary range, what they were projecting for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two was a budget in the range of almost one-point-eight million. So just remember that number as we go through the presentation. I just wanted to give you some of that background. So we also wanted to try to be competitive and to be able to recruit and draw individuals into our fire department. So as we were working on the salary, I went and did an online, I just looked at what was available on the websites for each different city, and I looked at the ten different agencies here in Riverside County from what we were proposing based off of that middle number figure from Cali Mesa and CAL-Fire, and what everybody else was paying. So for in the rank of firefighter, initially, they were looking at a salary range annually of about forty-six thousand dollars. What we're proposing is about sixty-seven thousand dollars for a firefighter paramedic. And that actually ranks us at number eight in the salary survey. So we are above both Cali Mesa, and we're above Idlewild in that example. If you look at those fire agencies independently, they are both one-station departments, and we are a one-station department. So I believe we're right about where we should be in that range. Obviously, the other departments have more stations, bigger responsibilities, and so forth, and they're paid at a higher rate. For engineer, we went from forty-nine to seventy-three. For captain, we went from fifty-four to eighty-one. And there's an asterisk here for fire battalion chief. If you remember back in their salary, in their feasibility analysis, they recommended a staff captain for the organization. And the city manager and I have talked about it, and we've explained how, you know, the responsibilities, duty coverage, being on call, and so forth. And we've proposed that we've upgraded this position from a fire captain to a fire battalion chief, so that's why it's a larger jump. That person will work a forty-hour work week. The fire chief will work Monday through Thursday. This person will work Tuesday through Friday. So we'll be able to get five days a week coverage versus the typical four that we would have with a traditional schedule. And then the fire chief's salary went from eighty thousand to six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. So the other ranks actually fall into play at the number nine position. And one of the reasons for...
Not six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand.
I'm sorry. Did I say? A hundred-and-eighteen thousand.
If so, I'd like to apply for the position of fire chief.
I work with the city attorney on my contract. Obviously, you need to find a different person to work with for your contract.
I'll be the fire chief.
I'm sorry about that. But for the other positions in there, they fall back to number nine, and one of the reasons why is Idlewild basically has a paramedic rank for their engineer and for their captains. Well, we've taken that into consideration, and if those individuals that we hire is a certified or a licensed paramedic, they will get a five percent bump on their salary in addition to that, and then we'll be back online again with where we were being about number eight for those positions. So that's the pay scale. But along with that goes benefits. And all this is important because we're building a budget. And so these employees will be members of what we call PARS, which is the Public Agency Retirement System. It's different from PERS. They're going to have a defined contribution program versus what the other employees in the city will have is a defined benefit program. And I would like to put out, there's twelve employees in the new fire department. One of them will be a non-sworn or civilian, that will be the administrative analyst or administrative assistant. That person, being a non-sworn, will have the same benefit package as the other city hall employees, so that will be a PERS employee and not a PARS employee. And the way PARS works is a city will contribute seven-point-five percent into this retirement system, and the employee has to match that with seven-point-five percent. One nice thing about it is they don't have to wait to a certain age to collect it, they can collect it at any time, so there's some benefits there, but it is a different program than what the other employees have. We did try to match as closely as we possibly could the benefit program that the other city employees have that the fire department employees will have, but it's not a hundred percent there. For health insurance, there's a thousand-dollar cap that we're gonna put on that, and we're still working through how exactly that will come into play. Most probably, it'll be a cafeteria-type plan. They'll have fifty-thousand-dollar life insurance, they'll get basically two weeks of sick leave a year, two weeks of vacation leave a year. The firefighters work a fifty-six-hour work week, but they'll do that on a shift schedule of forty-eight hours on, with two days on, and then ninety-six hours off. It's actually a lower work week than the current CAL-Fires have now. They work a ninety, or seventy-two-hour work week, where they work three days in a row and then get several days off. The fire chief and administrative, the battalion chief will work Monday through Thursday, Tuesday through Friday. There'll be available voluntary plans that they can put money into if they want to, like AFRAK or deferred comp. All their uniforms are gonna be provided, and the city will pay for Medicare at one-point-five percent. So again, all this information is important, you have to build this to try to figure out what your salaries are gonna be. So we get into now our budget, and so for the six-month period from, and it's actually a little bit early because we're gonna bring the people on and do some training, but that's not reflected in these numbers, that's reflected in the startup cost numbers. The employees will be hired in late November, early December at different tiers, but the cost for salaries and benefits will be four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-eight-hundred for the salaries, and then a hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars in benefits. And then the operation and maintenance side of it. And what we tried to do on the operation and maintenance is really separate out the fire department so it's freestanding. Our insurance costs for the buildings and facilities are in the fire department budget. Our telephone costs, our computer costs, our Xerox machines, all those costs are separate in the fire department so that it's standing on its own, so that you can see what the fire department budget. So for that first year, the operating budget, the operating budget is gonna be seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Chief, that's a nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven...
Why do I keep going? I'm sorry. And I didn't wear my glasses tonight, I'm sorry, so I think that's what's going on.
And just to clarify, that's by the first year, chief means the first six months of operation, which is the second half of the fiscal year.
Correct, thank you, sir. To start this organization, though, takes some front money, some startup costs, and we've broken it down into what we're calling capital items and then startup cost. So I'm not gonna go through the whole list in there, but there are a lot of different items. We have to dress our people. We have to get them in uniforms, personal protective equipment for wildland fires and for structure fires. We need to buy all the radio equipment, portable radios and mobile radios for the vehicles. We need, as I said, an orientation academy, so we're bringing the people on about a month early. We have to pay them during that time, and we need instruction material during that time, and so that costs money before we hire them. We need to do background investigations, we need to put them through a medical to make sure that they're fit to do the job. We need to, last meeting, we bought the command vehicles, well, now we need to convert those command vehicles, there's money in there. Setting up and getting the fire station to go from just a living area into an office area and a living area is gonna take some money in IT and telephones and remodeling costs, so we've got money for that. Those fire engines that we purchased back in February need equipment, so we have money for the equipment. The paramedic equipment, the monitor, the paramedic monitor in itself is a thirty-thousand-dollar item, and we're taking advantage of group purchasing and purchasing what AMR is, they're replacing all their monitors, and we're able to piggyback onto their purchase at the same cost. Self-contained breathing apparatus, everybody needs to have one of those. Compressors, we have to be able to refill the air once we exert the air, so we have to have a compressor at the fire station. So all those items add up to about seven-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars. I got that one right. Thank you.
Chief, can you go back to the previous slide?
I can.
You made a comment that we're looking at nine-hundred, city manager, you made a comment, we're looking at nine-hundred, yeah, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand dollars for six months.
Operating costs.
Operating costs.
Right, so that does not include the startup costs. That's the operating cost for the first six months.
I think I know where he's going, though. If you just double it for a year, it's gonna be higher. I'll get there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so there are some costs, though, that in that six-month, and some of the operating things that we still had to pay for for a full year. And so if you look at...
So it's not actually...
Yeah. I have a slide, I think, that will answer your question when we get there. So again, these are one-time cost only, so the six-month budget for the fire department will be one-million-six-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars one hundred. So that's for that first six months. Now, it's important to note that based off the six-month salary, we broke it out, and we plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So let's say we did our fire department for an entire year. What is it gonna cost us for an entire year? If we go back to the ESCI study, in the study for twenty-two, twenty-three, they projected one-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven. The fire, the CAL-Fire in their proposed budget, or what we forecasted for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, was two-million-three-hundred-and-forty-eight-two-hundred-and-eleven dollars. So again, that's even more than what ESCI looked at. But when we did our math, we anticipate that our fiscal year budget for twenty-two, twenty-three would be one-million-seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-seven.
And that's with startup?
Startup was one-time. We don't have to pay that again.
Excellent.
So we've already paid that. Now, that number is forecasted a ways out. We haven't taken into consideration if they're gonna get COLAs or merit increases at that time. That's based on the exact same salaries today, so it hasn't been forecasted with any of that. So that's sixty-seven thousand, almost sixty-eight thousand dollars less than what ESCI thought. And it's, I'm sorry, yeah, and this is five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, then ESCI's projected contract of, I think that should say CAL-Fire, but two-thousand, two-million, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused here. Correct. Their projected cost of two-million-three-hundred-and-forty-eight, it's five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand dollars less than what ESCI anticipated or projected that CAL-Fire would be costing us. So to answer your question, Mayor Pro Tem, on an annual basis, as we look at everything and you pay for the full year of something, our costs are still going to be projected significantly lower than what ESCI thought they would be and what the projections were for CAL-Fire. So that's the fire department budget, more in a nutshell. I'm sorry if I got a little flustered with some of the numbers there, but it's all right there. We are very confident in the work that we've done on the salaries and the benefits and where we're at with everything, and we anticipate that moving forward, one-seven, somewhere around there will be that first-year operating budget minus whatever employee increases in COLA or step increases. So I'm available for any questions if you have any.
I have a comment. I'm very pleased that salaries went up for all the firefighter personnel. I'm very pleased with that.
Thank you. And again, it was based off of the direction that you gave at the November meeting that we made those adjustments.
We want good people who wanna stay.
So do we.
I just wanna, you know, say thanks again for all the hard work. I mean, it's been, it's been a lot, and I know we're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. And just keep it up, my friend, you're killing it, you're crushing it. Thank you for being so transparent with what you're working on, and if you need anything, we're here for you, obviously.
Thank you.
I just don't have a pair of glasses for you, I apologize.
They're upstairs in the office. My apologies.
Can any of the employees opt out of PARS?
They cannot, no.
Okay.
We are required to have a certain amount in there, and so this is the determination that we've found correct. And that's because we're not paying social security. We had to either do one or the other, and so we had to present so much into that.
Dale, do you have any questions or comments? Is there any comment card?
We do have a public comment from Mr. Jack Wamsley.
Okay.
Chief.
Welcome back.
Wait, wait. Damn, yeah. The one thing I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, what's going to cost with reference to responses that we have to make possibly to other cities or other cities coming here? We have one engine company. We got a house fire, we got a two-engine company, truck coming in, so we're gonna be backed up by other cities. I can't see them coming in for nothing, but I don't know what your program. That would be my question.
Again, just a little refresher. Public is welcome to comment, but we don't typically get into back and forth, you know, question and answers. Happy to talk with you separately and go through any kind of detailed questions you have on operations of the department, but you're welcome to make any comments you have.
Okay, well, that's my comment, then. Where are the funds for that?
Sure, okay.
This is a discussion of the draft?
It's a draft.
This is just a draft, so this is just discussion. If council has any specific direction to staff, this would be a good time to let us know if you have any changes or anything. Otherwise, we'll be bringing this back next month for your approval.
Yeah, so every May, we bring the first draft to get feedback from the council. We take that feedback and incorporate it into the final draft, which we'll bring to you at the June meeting for adoption.
Okay. So this is the draft?
This is the draft.
Okay. And perhaps those questions will be answered in the next version. Okay, so moving on to item thirteen.
Item twelve, I made a mistake on there. I'm gonna go ahead and take item number twelve.
No, that's item number thirteen.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, move on then, I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay, so I'm very excited to bring this item to you guys tonight. This is the discussion of city-sponsored events for 2021. We've all had a rough year. Twenty-twenty was hard for everybody with COVID and the cancellation of all of our city events. Fortunately, the... Fortunately, the city council had to make the hard decision to cancel those city events back on September 2 of 2020. But based on the recent announcement from the governor's office to reopen the state as of June 15 of this year, city staff believes that it's possible to hold successful events while still following the guidelines of the Riverside County Health Department and the CDC. We have three proposed events here. We have our Veterans Day celebration. We have our Second Annual Winter Wonderland Event, and then we have our State of the City Event. We have proposed dates here. For Veterans Day, we have Thursday, November 11. For our Winter Wonderland Event, we have Saturday, December 4, and our State of the City is still to be determined. In addition to those three events, staff is proposing, well, actually, I shouldn't say staff, at the recommendation of our mayor, we are adding an additional event this year. This is going to be in line with this year's Park Copper Event that the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association will be hosting, and we will be doing an event that's scheduled to take place on Saturday, May 29 from 9 to 11. It's going to take place here in the town center at the Veterans Memorial Park. This event will serve as a kickoff to the POA's weekend-long event. Our residents will be encouraged to visit the memorial park, where the city will host a small ceremony honoring our fallen heroes. The event will feature Mayor Castillo placing a wreath at the memorial while a bugle player performs taps. The city will offer complimentary coffee and donuts. We'll have a very cool military-looking vehicle so people can take pictures. We'll have city staff there with the city easy up. We'll be promoting the military banner. We'll be taking sign-ups for the veterans committee, for people that want to join, people who want to be recognized at the Veterans Day Celebration. And it's just going to be a short event that we hope the community will take part in. Now, if the council remembers, for this fiscal year, we had budgeted $20,000 for the State of the City slash 30th Anniversary Gala, and we budgeted $30,000 for the Winter Wonderland Event. Because of the events being canceled, we reallocated those monies, and the monies were to be used for the memorial park for upgrades to the electrical, to purchase a new Christmas tree. So what we're proposing is that money that was reallocated, we're proposing that we take $2,000 of that so we could use for the event to be held at Memorial Day this year, which would be at the end of this month. And then, while the budget for fiscal year 2021, '22 is not expected to be adopted until next month, it's crucial for city staff to start making arrangements for the Winter Wonderland and all these events that will take place next fiscal year. So we'd like to start signing contracts, we'd like to start making reservations, but without a budget being approved, we'd like to get some type of direction from the council committing to these events, just kind of giving us the okay to do that. And just finally, I'd like to say that we'll be proposing the same budgeted amounts for the next fiscal year for the same events. So we'll be doing $30,000 for the Winter Wonderland and $20,000 for the State of the City slash 30th Anniversary, or 31st Anniversary, whatever we decide to call it. But that's kind of our presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. If we could have some discussion here, just kind of see where you guys are at with the events or your thoughts on it.
I can't believe it was two years ago we had the Winter Wonderland Event, right? It's just so crazy to me, and that was such a big hit. I know that it was a lot of work, but we did get sponsorships. CRNR played, Edison played, I believe.
Cole Huber donated.
Cole Huber played, yeah. I mean, I know that they're going to pretty much cover 50% of it, so that's a nice notion. We appreciate that, Stephen. So I'm just curious if we're going to use, you know, that same tactic that we did two years ago and tap our friends with Benjamins, see if we can get some help.
Absolutely. We always get great sponsorships for the Veterans Day Event. And we will seek, I'm sure we will receive sponsorships for the other events as well. We already have commitments from Cole Huber to cover almost all the costs.
It's good, it's good.
I'd also like to mention that when we did the Winter Wonderland Event, we partnered with the Canyon Lake Family Matters Club, so that is something that we plan on doing again this year. We have a kickoff meeting that we'll be hosting with them hopefully pretty soon here. They had committed to helping quite a bit more last year, unfortunately, because of COVID, that got canceled. I'm not quite sure what their situation is this year, so we're kind of still hoping that they're willing to, you know, contribute a little bit more, but we're still kind of in the process of meeting with them to kind of get that kickoff started.
That's great.
I think from my perspective, all the events that you listed are really, have had positive outcomes for us. Veterans Day's been successful, extremely successful. The Winter Wonderland, we really had a big turnout, so I think it's really in our interest to keep those going. I'm inclined with Councilman Smith to get as many sponsors as we possibly can to offset some of our costs, but I really think it's a benefit for us, not only for the city, but from a PR standpoint.
Absolutely.
Awesome job.
I think it's basically mandatory. And my thought process on it being mandatory is that, you know, the city offers a lot of different components to the quality of life in Canyon Lake, and this is something that is good, so we need to continue to do it. Dale, you want to say something?
No, I love these events. I think they're great. We, as a city, don't have a lot of land and parks, and we can't have the big Menifee take over the big park area celebrations, but we can do, especially the veterans' memorial service and all the... And we need to have a Winter Wonderland and a city gala, so I think this is great.
And I argue that we do it better than Menifee or any other city around, and I'm just saying.
Do we need a motion?
Well, is there any comment on this? Public comment card?
I don't have any public comment cards on this item. We don't need a motion, just, you know, if staff can...
Actually, I would like a motion and a vote on it, because we're going to start committing to spending funds that haven't been budgeted yet. And so I'd like to...
To approve the budget for the approved events? Is that what we're...
Yeah, fiscal impact. I second it.
Okay, so roll call. Councilmember Green?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Welty?
Hi.
Mayor Castillo?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the last business item.
It is.
It is number 14. That is not a business item. Okay. Chief, welcome back.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, city manager, city staff, and the public. There's only one number in here, so I'll try not to get that one number wrong this time, but I wanted to provide a quick update of what I've been doing the last month. Been here now for three months and continue to progress and move forward in the creation of your fire department. Probably one of the most important aspects of the creation of this new fire department is establishing those contacts, meeting with the stakeholders, developing relationships. Out of those relationships will come agreements that I think were kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, those agreements of who's going to help and how is that help going to get here. I've engaged with several of our neighbors now, and those conversations are taking place, and we're working through them. So I think that's important for everyone to know that everyone understands what we're doing so far, and they're working with us as we try to move forward, and we'll just see where it goes. And I'll continue to report back as we start making more progress. I also learned about another grant opportunity, and so I applied for a second grant. The first grant we applied for was an assistance to firefighters grant. We asked for the diesel extraction system or exhaust system for the fire station. This grant is for breathing apparatus for the Type 6 wildland fire engine. And so I learned about a grant through Firehouse Subs. There's a Firehouse Subs in Menifee, and so we were able to apply for that grant, and we'll find out in July if we were successful in that. I also met out at the fire station with some of our utility people, the satellite television, cable TV, frontier communications, and what we're trying to do is figure out how we make that technology work, maintain the station alerting system there, how we communicate with City Hall and be part of the City Hall complex from a satellite facility. So we're working through on that. Continue to work with the contractor as we develop plans to add basically three offices at the fire station for the fire chief, the battalion chief, and the administrative assistant there, and still have a facility where the firefighters have room to do what they need to do there, too. We met with the city building official, and we talked about how the new fire department will be a player in the city's plan review process, the plan check process, fire sprinkler plans, fire inspections, and so forth, and we're developing a plan for how we will integrate into that. Obviously, earlier, we finalized our work on our budget, and we had our budget presentation earlier this evening. I actually traveled last week to Appleton, Wisconsin, and met with the representatives that are building our fire engine and finalized, for the most part, everything that's going to be going on with that fire engine, and we are on target to have them... They're looking at, hopefully, the final inspection being in early November, so then they can get it out here, and we should be on track to be ready to start training the first week of December with the fire engines. Working on several agreements right now. The city attorney has reviewed one of our agreements with Riverside County Emergency Medical Services Agency so that we can be a paramedic provider. That agreement is now back at the county, and so we're going through and dotting out of our I's and checking our T's, so that continues to move forward. We received a draft agreement from Riverside County Fire, CAL FIRE, for our dispatching, so we've resolved that question that was out there, and so CAL FIRE will be doing our dispatching. And in a press release that will go out today, it's going to be interesting, you know, how will that change? And the nice thing about using CAL FIRE for our dispatching is nothing will change. When you dial 911, it's still going to go to what we call the P-S-A-P, the Public Safety Answering Point. That's typically going to be the Riverside County Sheriff's Office in Riverside. If you're calling from a cell phone, it actually may go to CHP, and that call center is located in Fontana. Once you report that you're having a fire or a medical emergency, the call will be transported to the Paris ECC or Emergency Command Center. From there, they have all of our information, they'll have our ABL or Automatic Vehicle Locator, they'll dispatch the closest resource, and it will be dispatched as before, and the end users should see no change in how our dispatching will occur. They'll maintain all of our radios and our mobile data computers and the fire apparatus, and so it's a very good deal, and so we're working through that contract right now. So those pieces of the puzzle are starting to come together.
Chief, real quick, has the price changed on that, or is it still the same that was originally budgeted?
It's roughly about the same.
I think it was, what, was it 105-ish?
105-ish, and it's about 1010.
Okay, so it's right there.
So it's right about where we thought it would be.
It's good that we got that going in the right direction then, so...
And so that piece, again, that would have been a critical piece. If we would have had to look elsewhere, building run cards and response plans and all of that stuff, all of those things are already built because it's already happening today. So this month is actually Wildland Awareness Month, Wildfire Awareness Month, and we did include some information in our press release on that that we'll be hitting out this week. And we talked about the Ready, Set, Go program and what residents can do to prepare prior to a wildland fire. Some may not know, but portions of the city are in the state's identified very high-fire-hazard severity zone, and so with that comes some more stringent building requirements in certain areas along with that, and so we've included all of that. And as we look at what happened today, there was a fire off the Ortega, and there was a 40-acre fire just north of us off the 215, I believe, that started from a vehicle accident. And so it's hot outside, the brush is dry, we're still in these near drought conditions, so hopefully this information on Wildfire Awareness Month will be helpful for our community. So that's what I've been doing the past month, continuing to move forward. Again, thank the staff, the city manager, and everyone for all their support. There's a lot to do, but we are knocking items off the checklist every day. So I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Just one big daunting question, Chief. How you feel about startup date? Good?
Well, we'll be there, by all means, yeah.
I love it. That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Anything, Larry? Any public comment? Well, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, we haven't heard enough from Chris today, so...
Well...
It's his turn.
I know you're going to be sad, but I have nothing else to add this evening.
Okay, council comments. You guys do have a three-minute limit, a strict three-minute limit. You go first.
Is it my turn?
Turn on your mic, I think. There you go.
All council members should have received this audit. It's from the RCA, and it's referenced to all the cities that are collecting the fees for the mitigation plan, and it's compliance, and it's a, I don't know, four, five-page document. Anyway, the good news is in here with all of the criteria that they use to evaluate cities, permits, permit processing, the collection of the fees, our city did quite well. I mean, quite well, meaning there was no deficits at all on all permits. We had an RCA meeting on the 3rd, a virtual meeting on the 3rd of May, and rough it up very quick. We're in the process of buying tax delinquent properties that are in the RCA purview. We've developed, and what's going to be made, both the cities and the school districts for the MSHCP, how these programs on the environment and the different things in the ecosystems, they're very short blips, but they're going to be like on a YouTube channel, and you can use it for education or education about why we're doing the habitat. So those are going to be, they're going to be the eight to 10 videos, and they'll be out there doing some pilots right now. They've got like four of them. They're using banning and some other areas as kind of the kicking off. So they make it available to the local jurisdictions to put on your channel plus YouTube. The NEXA study is complete, and every city's moving forward. We're in that process. Next meeting is June 7. Have a great day.
Thank you. Councilmember Welty?
Take off the mask and breathe for a second. Obviously, we have the empty chair tonight. It's very sad. My wife is a good friend with Jenny, and, you know, when she returns, I just... If the community can just support her as she comes back and faces the empty house. I've seen Jordan hundreds of times, and generally Jenny's with him, but I've never really seen Jenny without Jordan, and so I'm just asking those people to know where to reach out and support her when she returns. Leisure was canceled this month, so there's nothing to report there. We do have the roundtable, of course, every month. As Jeremy said, we talked about working with the POA on the short-term rentals. I think that'll be very effective. I will tell you, these meetings are wonderful. We all seem to be on the same page. Communication's great, and it's wonderful. So we did meet the new community patrol chief, our supervisor, and we, I talked to him specifically that summer's out, the kids are out, and with our lakefront property, it's very, it's somewhat, it's attractive, but at times it can be an attractive nuisance. So I just want to say, everybody thinks the police or community patrol is the key to safety in our community, and I don't believe it. I believe that the key is the members and the citizens that are the key to the safety. So make sure that if you see somebody doing something illegal, you feel your life is threatened, you feel your property is threatened, dial 911. That's what the police do. If you feel somebody's a little noisy or they're parking incorrectly, that's when you call the community patrol and let them know to come help you. And if in doubt, please call 911. So again, once you see trouble starting to build in one of our local parks, don't wait until it blows up. If you see some strange people sitting on the curb by your house and you don't know them, call the community patrol. They'll drive up and ask if they have any business, but I would just say, be prudent. Sometimes you go to Facebook and people say, "Oh, I saw these kids doing any of these things," and the patrol wasn't there. Well, my answer is, well, did you call? Did you call and say, "Hey, I saw these kids creating mischief?" And the answer is that we, as residents, need to make that call if we want to be safe, because, you know, we don't have 400 policemen cruising through our community, but we have 12,000 residents, and we need them to work together.
I'll make it quick. It's been a long night, and it's been a long 48 hours. You know, it's been tough, obviously, with the passing of Jordan, and, you know, it's been difficult, but at the same token, it's also been very uplifting because of all the calls that I've received regionally from other elected officials, you know, giving their prayers and thoughts to the family and to the community. And, you know, for me, I know Jordan was a mentor of mine, and I was blessed to learn from him, and I have so much to carry on from what he taught me. But like he always says, get back to business, Jeremy. So real quick, I'm going to give a quick update, it's going to be like 45 seconds. Casey, you're going to be so impressed with me. Three boards I sit on RCTC, RTA, and SCAG. Simply put, RCTC, for those commuters out there, you know, toll road's open, it's awesome, it's working, the, I'm talking about the 15 Express Lane all the way through, finally it's open, it's running, it's doing great. The project next to the old Walmart in Lake Elsinore, we're so close, it's going to be done hopefully within the next couple of months, so just hang on to that. It's a nightmare of the traffic, I get it, but they're doing all they possibly can. They keep on coming up with different road issues. RTA, ridership's down, student ridership's going to start happening again, but the interesting talk at RCTC is what we're going to do with Zoom meetings moving forward. I think that's going to be a talk that's happening right now up in Sacramento. They're looking at legislation on allowing, you know, governing taking place from being able to do Zoom meetings. So that's going to be very interesting, especially for our regional boards that we sit on. We might not have to drive in all the time, or it could be a quarterly thing. Last, SCAG. SCAG is big government, scares me every time I attend the meeting. Just received another appointment by the new president coming in, Clint Lattimore from Eastville, so we'll have presentation on SCAG. Jordan and I both serve on that committee, and I'll be attending in his stead tomorrow for the general seminar, or whatever you want to call it, so we'll have representation for that. But hearts and prayers, and, you know, we've got to try to keep our heads up, so, done.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a somber, somber council meeting. It's hard to look to our side and not see our colleague and friend, but when he was running, he said he had a bunch of projects he needed to see through, and so we owe it to him to do that. We've been doing the coffee meetings today. Darcy was the host, and there was a great turnout. It's really nice to, to see the community come out, even though it's kind of early at some 30 in the morning, but I think it's growing, and that is encouraging. Other quick thing I wanted to mention is it's starting to get hot again. The citizen, Jeannie Hunerin, who initiated the Operation Juice Box Collection last year, has already put her box out on the front porch, collecting juice boxes again to give to our deputies, so that when they interact with the youth in our community, it's a very positive interaction. So if you are interested in donating juice boxes, or water bottles, or crayons, and coloring books, I know Donna Ritchie was collecting those items, please reach out to any of us, and we will give you the address for drop-off. I know it's been posted on some of the social media pages, but if you don't go on social media, we can get that information, too. But we would like to continue that in Canyon Lake. The next regular meeting will be Wednesday, June 2nd, at 5:00 PM for closed session and 6:30 for open session. Tonight's city council meeting will be adjourned in honor of our beloved colleague and friend, Jordan. Our hearts are with his wife, Jenny, and their family, as well as the entire Canyon Lake community. The posts on social media have been just phenomenal, just so much love. So I know, I think all of us are grateful to continue to see that, so. Adjourned.